To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Commissioner Bergstrom, you'd be good enough to lead the end vocation.
I'd be happy to finish praying. Lord, make us instruments of your peace. Where there is hatred, let us sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is discord, union. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. Granted, we do not so much seek to be consoled as to console. To be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned. It is in dying that we are born to eternal life.
Quick call roll, please.
Commissioner Batson? Here. Commissioner Bergstrom? Commissioner Daz?
Here.
Commissioner Goodman?
Here.
Commissioner Jaques? Here. Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Here.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Motion support for that?
Motion support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. No consent agenda. Items A, B, and C, the minutes over the March 21st, April 18th, and the 2017 monthly appropriations. Motion to approve? Motion?
Second.
Support. Quick call roll, please.
Commissioner Batson? Yes. Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Daz?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaques?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Anybody signed up, Tom?
I don't think so.
Okay. I'll still make the announcement. Does anybody have anything to say on behalf of public comment?
Just really quickly, my name's Robert Carpenter. I'm the new executive director of the Armory Youth Project, and I just wanted to come by and say hello, put a face to a name, and also just let you know that we really value not only students' input in the area, but also input from community leaders. So I'll leave my information here, but if you have any questions about the Armory Youth Project, about what we're doing, or any input that you'd like to provide, especially from Out County as well, we're looking for solutions to provide transportation for Out County students and the county live services for all students in the area, grades 6 to 12. So I'll leave my information here, and I'd love to have any conversations.
Why don't you just pass it around?
Or give me a tour.
Sure.
Now, you've got two Dial-A-Ride Board members here on the County Commission also, so...
So any input that I would love to give, I would appreciate that. If you'd love to come get a tour of the Armory, we're going to be painting this week and be open as of beginning to middle of June. So we're excited to be here and excited to provide relevant services for students in Out County.
I apologize. You said you started, or you're starting this week it's open?
So we're painting this week, and we're going to be opening this June.
Oh, June, okay.
Yep, yep.
Robert, can I just ask a question? I'm curious, what land do you own there? Do you own all of the parking lot and behind the Armory?
Part of the parking lot and behind the Armory. The city owns the other part of the parking lot, but we're working out an agreement with them in terms of plowing and all of that, so we have parking available.
All right, so at least a half or so of that parking lot is...
Yeah, it seems like a third. Our contractor is working out of it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it, and feel free to get in contact with us if you'd like to.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Moving on, time recognition.
We don't have response. Well, anything to announce that's unusual? Just remember, reminder that next month's meeting, May 16th, is a good evening meeting, starting at 5:00.
Mr. Palmer, you're up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Russ. It's been a while since I've seen a lot of you. Though I did see some of you at the PES meeting the other day. Well, we had our foreclosure hearing in February, and they had until March 31st to pay their 2014 delinquent taxes. And we actually foreclosed on 30 parcels of property this year. Only one of those is a homestead, and I believe that the property is vacant. Haven't been out there, but I've been told that it's vacant, so we're not really foreclosing on any of its homes this year, which is always a good thing. We did get some, several pieces of commercial property in Bear Lake, and as you know, one of them burned. So that's creating a lot of activity in the village of Bear Lake. We're in the process of, Fire Marshal is there now, doing his investigation and some cleanup. And then I'm getting bids from different contractors to go in and finish up the cleanup and do some fill work and topsoil and seeding for that property to get it to where it's, you know, more than usable. And I've gotten information from the village of Bear Lake that they will probably take that parcel in their first right of refusal, because it does match and work with their recreation plan. They had, in their recreation plan, they had planned to somehow get that building and remove it anyway, and so you'd have open space in view of the lake and such. So, still working on that. Maybe Mr. Kaminski can give us a little more information. He's been talking to the Fire Marshal more than I have.
Well, I know he's in the process of working on it, and he told me, we've already submitted this to our insurance. Our insurance is covering it. We probably need to do, this is the first time we've ever really had anything where the foreclosed property, so we, MLR May didn't even know we owned this. Of course, we didn't even know we owned it until April 1st, but they, you know, being a self-funded pool organization that we're all members of, it wasn't like dealing with a private insurer that said, "Oh, we never heard about the fact that you own this," or anything there. They're paying for, they're going to pay for all the cleanup. The Fire Marshal suggested to me on the phone that when he goes in, the road commission was going to help with some of the cleanup, and they were going to get some dumpsters there if the insurance company approved it, and that would kind of help with some of the cleanup, as he was going through the area, I guess, to try to determine the cause of the fire. And so that's being done. I talked to the insurance companies, and I said, "Oh, that's great, you know, it saves some money. I'm sure we'll, I'm sure that, you know, the road commission or, you know, will pay for the dumpsters and all that stuff, and that'll all be covered through our insurance." Now, when I say it's our insurance, it is coming from our loss fund. I mean, I give you a report, we have about $400,000 in our loss fund. So, I mean, technically, we're kind of paying for it, but it's kind of a part of our, a portion of our premium goes into this loss fund, and we've been building that over the years.
Like a line item.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's not coming from any, I mean, there won't be a check cut from this organization, from the county. It'll come from MLR May, and they'll pay for all that. So we've had a communication with them. I've been in communication with Russ. Russ has been at home a lot, so we've been talking and texting back and forth, and had a little bit of discussion with Pauline about it, and so it's moving. It's kind of funny, because I was sitting at home on Easter Sunday, and one of my nephews showed me the fire, and I said, "Oh, man." I said, "We own the building right across the street." And I said, you know, didn't think much of it, and then Russ, the next morning, tells me, "Well, we own that building too." So it's kind of a surprise, but, so I didn't even know we owned it.
Tom, will we recapture those ones when we start? No?
The building that we do own across the street, as we're doing stuff, is there an ability to address that issue?
Well, I'm addressing that building as well. That building is a really big liability, and so I've made the decision, as the county treasurer, to take that building down. I'm getting bids to take that building down now. Hopefully, we'll have all those bids in by the end of this week, and hope to have the building down end of May.
That's great.
That's my goal, is to get that building down and get it out of there, reduce the liabilities.
That would not be on insurance.
No. But what will happen there is that I will use delinquent tax revolving funds to take the building down. Then I will add that cost to the minimum bid when property goes to auction. Well, no, you know, based on what I'm getting preliminarily, it's going to cost about $100,000 to take that building down. So no one's going to pay $100,000 plus the delinquent taxes for that piece of property. So it will probably then go to the second auction, where there's no minimum bid, and I suspect that because it's a valuable piece of property, that it will probably wind up selling for somewhere close to what the value of the property is. And then, the difference between that and what we have into it will get charged back to all the local taxing jurisdictions. The schools, the township, the village, the county, 911, Dial-A-Ride, all of them, it'll get charged back to them. Now, I am working with a group from the Bear Lake area, and Timmer Wazwinka from AES, Laura Heitzelman from the Manistee County Foundation, some people from the village of Bear Lake, the township of Bear Lake, Pauline is involved, and we're looking at some ways to maybe reduce the cost that is going to be put on, back on the taxing jurisdictions with some fundraising activities. But we're not ready to really release that as of yet, until we get our final numbers and we know what we can, you know, but we're hoping, we're going to meet again next week, and hopefully at that time, we'll have the final numbers and we'll have a plan as to what we're going to do, and any kind of money that we can raise will just reduce the burden that goes back on multiple taxing jurisdictions. The schools are the ones that get hit the hardest, and so, you know, anything we can do to reduce their burden will be a good thing.
It's a good news, bad news?
Yeah. But, you know, it's going to be really good for the village of Bear Lake, for Bear Lake Township, to get that property cleaned up and tore down, and, you know, it's, because it's really an eyesore, and it's a liability, and now that we own it, it's our liability. So I really need to get it taken care of, so... Russ, on the property that was burned, you haven't asked them, and who's going to help clean that up? I haven't gotten any of the bids yet, and depending on how much the Fire Marshal does, it's probably going to change the cost of those bids as well.
Somewhere along the line, I heard a number, and I think this is probably a pretty high number, of about $20,000, but I don't know where I heard that. If that was, you then mentioned that?
Well, $20,000 is what the assessed value of the property is, and so there, that's probably what the insurance...
Oh, that's what they said. They said, yeah, I do remember that. They said that's what the coverage, they took the SEV of that building, of that property, and said, "That's what we will cover as far as cleanup goes, up to that amount." We're, I think it's going to be less than that.
Yeah, I think so, too.
The Fire Marshal told me, I haven't been up there, but the Fire Marshal told me there's not much left there to even clean up. I mean, there's some cleanup, but it's not like tearing down a building or anything like that.
Well, it looks like some of it's already been pulled down. Head to a pile. It has been. When the fire department was there, they had a contractor come in and pull some of that stuff down and kind of pile it up, and so, but it still needs to be hauled off. Because we were not able to go in there and do any kind of asbestos survey or asbestos abatement, the entire pile has to be treated as contaminated and go to the landfill as such.
We did also receive a letter, I just received a letter, a subrogation letter from one of the adjacent property owners, whose awning, I think, was damaged in the fire, but that's not something, that's something the insurance will deal with. I don't know anything about it. I sent the letter off to them. They sent, I saw some emails go back and forth among our organization, asking, you know, and they'll handle that. That's not something we need to be too involved in. They'll decide whether or not they're going to fight with somebody else's insurance company or not, so...
I have to say, Bear Lake Township Fire Department did a remarkable job, and it was such a potential to lose several buildings there. So it's amazing.
There were a lot of fire departments there. Arcadia was there, Necoma was there.
Wow, it's amazing that they didn't lose more, so...
Russ, we can't recoup the expenses for theories and stuff like that? When do we sell it again? Does that have to be just sold for what the tax bill allows, or what? Well, if it goes to auction, it will go, we will add the cost to that, but it's going to be taken by the village, I believe. And if it goes to the village, it's, they will just pay the delinquent taxes. Any other questions? That's all I have. I haven't been around...
That's enough.
Just a side note here, I want you to know that the Bear Lake community is very, very pleased with Russ's work here. They know he's been out on a little bit of sick leave here, but they certainly appreciate all your doing for them.
Good thing for cell phones. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Russ.
Okay, let's see. A few minutes early, we've got a 9:20 appointment. I guess, let's start with the Ways and Means.
Well, Ways and Means actually has, Ways and Means is personnel...
Yeah, I know, we do have a 9:30 in it.
They actually have both the specific times, because there's some things that some people want to be here for.
We have the same thing on personnel. Public safety. Would you like to start public safety? I'm sure.
Well, I bet the sheriff is ready, even though I might not make it. Sheriff, would you like to do a little report for us? You did a fine job at the Public Safety Committee. I want to know a report of that. We didn't have any action items, but I'm sure you can update us from that point to this point.
Well, okay, just a couple items for the full board. Last month, we had the opportunity to have a few guest speakers. I had personally had John Schneider from the Michigan State Police here. I also had the prosecutor here, Mr. Hague, and I also had the 911 director. And one of the reasons I did that is I shared some numbers the previous month when the board chair was unavailable, and I wanted to dive into some of those numbers and some of the statistics from 2016. And I certainly don't want to bore everyone with numbers today, because I think everybody probably had the opportunity to look at some of them. But my point being is, is the caseload work has really taken a swing here, and it's caused me some concern, and that's why I brought in some of the key players to address those issues, especially being with the state police. Commissioner Schneider basically said that they're not here like they used to be. He tries to get them here, we work together every day, but we get in a position to where we don't always have backup. They have a certain area to cover with five counties and a limited amount of men and women, and so we find ourselves kind of just running ragged, is what we've been doing. We're covering everything. We are spending some overtime. I'm not too concerned on the overtime as of yet, because we've had such personnel turnover. As I mentioned earlier, we still haven't filled everything, and there's some more personnel turnover up to come yet this summer with yet another deputy. We just had one leave, we filled that spot, and now, I was just told a couple days ago that Deputy Hogan is looking to go to Gaylord. He was given a conditional offer of employment come July. So again, this rotating wheel just keeps rotating, and we're staying above water. But my main concern with the complaint load is I had dispatch run some numbers from 2016. We were always in the habit of just, every time we go on a complaint, the guys give it a number at the office. Well, it got to the point where they're doing so many things that they just didn't have time to give it a number. They would be going from complaint to complaint, so things that normally don't require a lot of paper, they wouldn't give it a number. Well, that kind of skews my numbers. It skewed them to the point where, when I saw some of the real numbers that came out from dispatch, I was just in awe. Because we'll have 2,500 complaints in writing, dispatch dispatched us to 6,888 complaints.
In what timeframe?
In 2016.
Oh, for the year, for the year.
That doesn't count any traffic stops. If you count when they called in, anything traffic related, it was 9,000. The state police had three. Complaint load-wise, we had almost 7,000, they had 1,600. So if you break it down percentage-wise, we basically did 81% of the complaint police work. And again, I'm not knocking my friends at the state police. When they're here, they're very, very helpful. It's just the planning and the scheduling. We check in every morning, what do we have today? We may have a car that says we're in Manistee, Wexford. If that happens, they may be in Manistee for a few minutes, but the next you know, they're gone. And when we relied on them for backup, maybe because we only had one guy, because we had a transport, or we had this, that, they're not there. And so we end up, we do use the tribe. This morning, I'm on my way here, and we have two things going. I have one deputy on, because we have a couple at training. Because again, with the turnover, we have to prepare and train for the new depts that are coming, to teach them and stuff. But on my way here, there was a chase out of Benzie into Bear Lake, the car wasn't stopping. Our deputy's on the way up, now there was a domestic in Kometish. So Mike Securis, the marine guy, is supposed to teach marine classes in the morning, he was, instead of going there, he's heading up to help. I didn't hear anything from the state police. I don't know if they were even on this morning. But that's just one of the things, and it happens so frequently. It's just very, very concerning. So I wanted to share those numbers, because there's not a lot of traffic in this. I actually kind of figured out with traffic stops and things like that, 24% of the time was traffic stops. So if you, so if you think of that, okay, they're out there working traffic. Basically, to and from complaints, if it's something minimal, yeah, they may stop a car, they may do that. But if you divide 24% out of 14 townships, that's less than 2%. And just this morning alone, two calls this morning, the same places. You have Pierport, you have Bear Lake on the east shore, people complaining of traffic. I try to send them people, I just, I don't always have the people to send. So as we move forward, I just want you to be aware of some of these numbers and some of the things happening. As we budget time, I am going to be looking to get some extra help. We have to work our way through that. I don't know what the solution is. I know it costs money. I know that. But I have guys working 12-hour shifts, and they're getting ordered in, and they're time off, and it can only go on like this for so long, and someone kind of has to get it.
How do we compare with adjacent counties? Benzie, Wexford?
Well, like Benzie doesn't have 24 hours. So the state police will go up and cover that area, but that's one of five counties they will cover. They'll slide up that way. We have full coverage. We work 6 to 6, so we always have a car on at night. And we have one car on at night, that's a two-man car.
Is that part of the reason that the state police won't come into Manistee County? Do you figure it's already covered?
I don't know, because they know. And again, with us talking, they know we need it, because if we get a domestic or a drunk driver or something where we're tied up, we're vulnerable.
But do we have more incidents, do you think, than adjacent counties in or...
That I couldn't answer without researching.
Benzie also has, they'll have a deputy on call at home for if something serious is going on, and they will call that deputy out, and that deputy will have a car at the house.
They still have their location in on them, too.
Right.
Because I see them parked there all the time.
Okay, and I'm not sure what the sheriff's plan is on doing. I know he's concerned, too, with some state police issues, but I always say, "That's up in Benzie. I don't want to worry about here." We have a great relationship with the state. I mean, we're on the phone every day. So by bringing them here, and the prosecutor, he also talked about the increase in workload. I shared some numbers, like in 2015, 258 misdemeanors. In 16, there was 367. That's our agency. Felonies, it was 48 in 15. Last year, we had 96. I mean, the work is there, and we have 10 guys, so most of the time, we have at least two on. When we do have three, things go really, really smoothly. If the state's here, it's a bonus. If they're not, we can cover. But when there's only two, and sometimes one, because there's vacations, and we're very strict on how we allow time off. I mean, we've, we're getting creative, staying within the contract on how people can have time off.
Given that the volumes are, do you think you can encourage the state police to...
So, we met with Mr. Gore a little bit. I sent him a letter yesterday, and I also am in touch with Kurt VanderWaal, a rep. I just, I want to see where public safety is in their eyes. It just seems like there's going to be a new troop school of 150 people. Well, when they say 150, that's what it starts at. It usually finishes around 120, 110, they wash out a lot. But out of that 150, if they all made it through, 40, some of them are going to go to marijuana enforcement. What does that do? I mean, I understand it, but that doesn't help us here at the local level.
Aren't we doing that already? We have a...
Well, this is all up and coming here with townships being able to pass ordinances, and it's concerning, and I think we need to talk about it as we move forward in our budget study sessions.
Well, it does sound like there are some significant issues. I also wondered about some statistics possibly from the state, about where are their stops? Where are the majority of their stops? I mean, you know where yours are. I'd be curious...
I think we could probably do something like that.
Do a comparison. It's like, so if we're seeing a lot in Benzie County, and they're utilized a lot in Benzie County because of their, I have a trooper here, I mean, that program of letting me have a car at home, we've got troopers here, you know?
We have two in the county.
Yeah, so it's like, let's, let's see what we can get in those kind of agreements, too, and to throw on top of the fact that we have to discuss what's going on overall, you know, for our public safety.
Well, this is the first time that, in my recall, and I've only been back a couple of, two and a half, three years now, we had a state trooper in public safety meeting, which was nice, you know, to share the concerns and keep that dialogue moving forward. So I did appreciate Mr. Schneider's participation, and probably see him in the future again.
Yes, absolutely. And with study sessions, he's already told me I'll come. And they have a new post commander, just met him, he seems to be on board, too, so we have a good relationship, and I want to start there. On another note, this is a good thing, and I'll be bringing it to your attention next month. I don't want to let the whole cat out of the bag just yet, but I did apply for some lifesaving awards for some officers in 2016, as well as two citizens. And I got a phone call the day before yesterday that my packet's coming. We were successful on all but one. So I'm going to recognize a few deputies next month, I'm going to recognize a corrections officer and some citizens, and just doing some darn good work. I'm very pleased to do that.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, yeah, there are no other, no other items that can go beyond, so...
Motion would be in order to accept the public safety meeting minutes as presented? Will you make that motion? Motion, support? Support for that? All in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're up to our 9:20. At 9:28, board commission appointment, jury board. We have a recommendation from Judge Thompson to reappoint Ms. Patricia Beach, incumbent. If we were to take Mr. Thompson's recommendation?
I don't support Judge Thompson's decision.
Is there support for that? I think we have a second. Appointments, we need to take a roll call. So if the court call a roll, please.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Daz?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaques?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, now we're up to our 9:30, which is Ways and Means, we're back on track.
If you did the jury board, you just did the jury.
Page 22.
Okay, the Ways and Means Committee event on April 19th at 9:00 AM. Members present, Mark Bergstrom, Chair, Richard Schmidt, and Brooke Schaefer, all members present. Others attending, John Kaminski, administrator, controller, exelon, finance assistant, Travis Minker, library director, Roger Elbers, organization director, Rob Carson, planning director, Jill Lovack, Manistee County Clerk. First item is finance report. Claiming summaries for March 1, 2017 through April 19, 2017, on-demand checks totaling $913,642.72 are presented for review and approval. Payroll for the period of March 1, 2017 through April 19, 2017, total of $653,124.61, and that was three payrolls. Total reclaimed in the wild at the 25th, 2017, is $1,566,767.33. hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. I'll move to approve the on-demand checks, bills, and payroll, in the amount of one million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents, and it's the same be placed on file.
File.
I'll support.
Motion and support, any discussion? Quick call a roll, please.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Jaques?
Yes.
Ms. Schmitt?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Besser?
Yes.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Yes. The next item on the agenda was use of space agreement between Manistee County and Jawett Family Funeral Home. Uh, Mr. Kornitz presented to the committee for review and consideration a proposed use of space agreement, it's appendix A in your packet, between Manistee County and Jawett, uh, is that pronounced correctly, Tom? Jawett?
Yeah, Jawett.
Jawett, Jawett Family Funeral Home in Bedzoni, Michigan, to be used by the Regional Manistee Benzie County Medical Examiner, for the purpose of performing autopsies. A similar agreement has already been signed by Benzie County with this same funeral home. Using the same space will eliminate having two sets of equipment, or transporting equipment back and forth. This is the last part of the agreement to be accomplished for the regional medical examiner to be set up to perform autopsies. There still may be cases where bodies are left to be transported to other facilities for special equipment or testing, but overall, this will save some money for the counties and be a better program. It was moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Schaefer, to record approval of the use of space agreement between Manistee County and Jawett Family Funeral Home, for the purpose of the Regional Manistee Benzie County Medical Examiner to perform autopsies, and all members of the committee were in support.
Is there a motion for that?
I have the motion.
I'll support.
Motion and support, any further discussion?
I, I know that you, you're probably wondering why aren't we doing it to funeral home in Manistee County, but, uh, the, the medical examiner is recommending that we just buy one set, you know, one, so she doesn't have to transfer equipment back and forth, but we start with just one funeral home. Jawett was, was willing to do it, Benzie's got an agreement with them, so it's going to, still going to save us a lot of transportation money. Eventually, maybe we'll have a funeral home in Manistee that will do this. We're also working with, with Mepasda County for autopsies that are performed that need x-rays, and some other, uh, high, more high-tech equipment, and we'll be transferring, hopefully we'll get an agreement with, with Mepasda County, because they've got a brand-new facility, and for some of those kind of cases, we'll take them. I mean, our, our medical examiner will still perform them, but they'll be done in Big Rapids, but we're not quite there yet. Mitch is working on that, and I talked to Paul Bullock a little bit last night about it at the meeting, so.
And that's where we used to send them, we're still are, we do now.
No, we were sending, we were sending them to Grand Rapids, and then we were sending them to western Michigan. I mean, it was costing seventy, eight, nine hundred dollars every time we sent a, a body for an autopsy. Plus, the autopsy expense was about twice as much as what our, our medical examiner will be, will be charging, so it's, it's going to save some money. We've had a lot of medic, uh, we've had a lot of autopsies this year already. Um, just last month, we had over about thirty-five thousand dollars. It's not all just autopsies, there's other things, but that's very unusual for, we, we, it's a big, it's a big year for that.
I do have one question for you, Tom.
Okay.
Um, and I realize that there's a cost savings by having, um, one set of equipment rather than two sets for each county. Um, do you have an idea what the equipment cost is for the medical examiner's equipment?
We're talking hundreds of dollars, not thousands. We're, we're, we're buying, you know, things as small as specimen bottles and things like that right now.
Okay.
And we did, we did get some equipment from the hospital for a hundred dollars, uh, a while back, that was probably worth thousands of dollars, but we got it for a hundred bucks. So, we saved quite a bit of money, plus we're, uh, we're sharing this cost with Benzie. So, uh, I'm not spending thousands of dollars for this, if that's what you're asking. You're probably wondering, you know, how much some of this stuff might cost.
I'm just wondering what the cost is. Thank you.
It's, it's hundreds of dollars, not thousands.
But the overall, is there any reason? Just, can you pronounce your name?
Oh, absolutely.
All right, clerk call a roll, please.
Ms. Goodman?
Yeah.
Ms. Jaques?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Besser?
Yes.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda for Ways and Means was a resolution in two thousand seventeen dash five, which is in your packet, authorizing the county clerk to submit grant applications to the state of Michigan for new voting equipment. Jill Novak, Manistee County Clerk, appeared before the committee to present resolution two thousand seventeen dash five, which gives the county clerk a voting to apply for a grant through the state of Michigan Secretary of State Office, for new voting equipment. Current election equipment is over twelve years old, and even though the equipment has served the county in Manistee well, twelve years and technology is very old. As Novak explained, the state's process of RFPs, request proposals, vendor selection, and funding. The vendor contracts are for ten years, and the cost to be to the county, city, and townships will vary, be very minimal in years one through five, but most of the cost being covered by a grant. In years six through ten, the municipalities will pay an annual fee for extended maintenance, which is still a reasonable fee. As Novak requested, the committee to recommend the approval of resolution two thousand seventeen dash five, which would give her the authority to apply for a grant to the state of Michigan Secretary of State Office for new voting equipment. It was moved by Mr. Schaefer, seconded by Mr. Schmidt, to recommend the approval of resolution two thousand seventeen dash five, authorizing the county clerk to submit a grant application to the state of Michigan for a new voting system. All members of the committee were in support. Do you have a motion?
Second. Motion and support, any discussion?
Uh, just one comment. I think the clerk updated the resolution, it's on your desk, the only change is, the only change is that the vendor is now listed.
Right, the vendor's been chosen, it's the new voting equipment. And I also added, um, I don't think it was in the packet, but the, uh, the, the proposal is attached to that new, um, to the new contract, the new proposal, so. Um, I can go through that, if you'd like to go through that and explain a little bit on that.
Um, Jill Novak, can you talk a little bit about the equipment that you're purchasing, and what it consists of?
Well, the equipment will be, um, the tabulators that are in the precincts that you put your ballots into now, will be, uh, they're not tabulators anymore, they're scanners. The scanner also tabulates the equipment. So, every ballot that goes through the tabulators, there will be a picture of it taken in that scanner. That's an upgraded technology. And, um, the equipment will also include an ADA, um, equipment for, um, handicapped persons, that's probably after paper. But, um, so that's included in the bid as well. Uh, the, um, proposal, there's two pages to the proposal. There's the first page, which is, it shows the zero amount, about three-quarters of the way down. That is the main equipment that's being bought by the state for that fund. So, that's what I'm applying for, is that thirty-one thousand dollar grant. And, um, then after that, there's extended service and maintenance, that's for years six through ten. So, the only, and that will be, um, you can see the tabulator and the, um, accessible ballot marking device, which is the ADA equipment. That is six hundred and fifteen dollars, and that's what the townships will also pay, um, in years six through ten. So, we've talked to the townships, and I, um, asked them to be budgeting for that, because we didn't know at this time if there was going to be costs in the first five years or not. So, there aren't that, um, the half of money and the money that was appropriated by the legislature, forty million dollars, is, um, taking care of that years one through five. So, anyway, in year six to ten, it'll cost six hundred and fifteen dollars for each municipality, uh, for each equipment. The city will be double that, because they'll have two, two machines. Uh, the accumulation-only EMS is the programming that the county will be responsible for, that's twenty-five hundred dollars per year in year six through ten. That is the, um, when we, all the townships and the city bring their information to us, it's software for us to put that, um, tabulate everything together and put it out on the web. And, um...
Question. Uh, is this information from the precincts sent to you now, or is it still going to be hand carried?
Well, we'll get to that in the second page, because we're going to upgrade that service. Um, so on the second page, there's, if we need extra scanners, which we don't, because the county will get one as well, so that'll be our extra, and that's what we use right now, and that seems to be sufficient. Um, you can see the results transmission, there's different types. There's the wireless, which is cellular, uh, which is quite expensive, and I talked with Gordon about all this, we've gone through this bid, and, um, that really is not the option that we want to take. Then there's the results transmission analog, which our phone lines are digital, so we can't do the analog, so that category is no. And the results transmission with the VPN or the FTP, um, Gordon seems to think that the FTP is a better solution, that it will work better for our, we'll use the internet, so there won't be any, um, any type of extra equipment that we'll need, and there is no extra cost for that. So, we'll be using that to transmit precincts to the county. And right now, they bring those cards in at night, um, that'll be automatic transmission, so that's another step that we're taking, updating that technology. And it's all, um, safe, I mean, the...
Security.
The cryptids, that was the word I was looking for, cryptid. So, there won't be any able to get into that. It'll just be a split-second transmission to the county, so. And then we will again upload it, um, combine those results and upload it to the web, so. It will be even quicker than what we have now. Then in the morning, they'll have to bring everything paper and their drives into us by eleven o'clock AM, for the board of canvassers to start at one PM, as normally, so. Um, that's just another step that we're taking in the technology, so it'll be nice.
So, Jill was out of pocket about thirty-five thousand, is that how much you were out there?
Well, it's twenty-five, it'll be twenty-five hundred dollars, um, not thousands, not twenty-five hundred dollars in year six through ten for the county.
Yeah.
Plus, we'll have our six hundred and fifteen dollars a year for our tabulators that we'll have to have the extended maintenance on. There is a computer here, desktop computer under election management system hardware, it's on the second page, but we're not really sure if we need that. Um, this system will run on Windows eight point one, and we have seven point, right now, Windows, but Gordon tells me that we'll be going to Windows ten within the next year. So, um, if we're at Windows ten, then I don't need to buy anything more. The equipment, the specs that I receive from the company, um, is covered by our computers that we have already in the clerk's office. So, we don't really need to buy a computer, um, but we might have to upgrade that Windows if it's before Windows ten comes to the county. Does that make sense? So, um, I mean, seventeen hundred dollars, Gordon says he can get that same computer for about seven hundred dollars, so I don't think I'm going to buy that from the company, if we have to buy a computer with a Windows eight on it. If we don't, then that money will be saved, but we'll have to buy Windows eight. I did budget money for this in our budget, because we knew this was coming. I put two thousand dollars away in my budget for this election equipment for the year. So, that will be really the only cost in years one through five, will be a computer we needed, our Windows eight point one. I do have to get a compact flash reader/writer, because we will be burning all the cards, we'll be programming the cards in the clerk's office now. Right now, we have a vendor that comes in that helps us, and if we want to do that, it's cost a thousand dollars per, um, election for him to come in, which I don't think that's necessary, we're going to do that from our office. And, um, if we want them to pre-program some things for us, that's another thousand dollars, and so we're going to do all that in the clerk's office. So, in the long run, it will be saving money. There still will be some programming costs by the programmer, um, to actually print the ballots, because I, of course, I can't do printing, but, um, is a very, it's a very reasonable cost. I've compared printers, I mean, this is all down the road, but I've compared printer costs, and we pay about, not even half of what other clerks use for their printer costs, so. And we pay like thirty-six cents a ballot, they pay like ninety-some cents a ballot, and I don't know why, because I'm very satisfied with the printer that we've had over the last twenty-some years I've been here, so.
I just, I just, I'm trying to summarize this, and, you know, the thirty-one nine-eleven is a wash, we're basically going to quit that page.
Right.
That's good.
Right.
And then just add the others up, and, you know, you got fourteen thousand, extended service, um...
Well, but that's for nineteen precincts and eighteen ADA machines, so that is the whole county, which we won't be paying. We'll just pay our portion of one three-seventy-five and a two-hundred-and-forty, so that's sixteen hundred and fifteen dollars a year.
Okay.
That's what the county will pay.
That's not clear.
Plus the twenty-five hundred. Well, if you see, it does say nineteen of those at three-seventy-five, and eighteen of them at two-forty, and it pulls it out to the extension.
So, those are going to be all for the county, or going to be for other...
That's what the municipality certainly has, so.
Okay. All right. I guess that's similar in a results transmission, that's about seventeen thousand, five hundred, and again, I was, but twenty-one of those, so I'm not using all those eight percent, it's just a portion of that, too.
Where are you at, Larry?
Results transmission, based on orders?
No, we're not going to be, that's the cellular, which we won't be using, the cellular.
Okay.
And then the next results transmission is analog, which we can't use, because our phone lines are digital. So, then you go down to the results transmission VPN or FTP, and that's what we'll be using. And like I said, I have to find, I have to, uh, we have a compact reader/writer right now, but it's not the same type for these new cards. Um, so I have to pay sixty dollars to buy a new reader/writer. The townships will have to buy that, too, because they'll be uploading their, uh, results to us, so that is probably their only cost that they'll have in years one through five, so sixty dollars is really...
So, will we be estimated out of pocket, that's for...
Um, for the whole ten-year contract?
No, just that we, this county has to pay.
Um, nothing for year six, uh, years one through five will be pretty much free unless we have to buy a computer, and that's on working with Gordon, Gordon, uh, so at the most of that would be seventeen fifty and a sixty-dollar reader/writer. So, it's really minimal, yeah, really minimal.
Jill Novak, I've got a couple of questions for you. I just first want to clarify something. Um, did you say that this software that you're looking at is actually Windows ten compatible in, if, when you do the upgrade in your office?
It is. Right, if we have Windows ten, eight point one will work with Windows ten.
Okay, thank you. And then my, I do have a couple of other questions about the technology as well. Um, does this use a paper ballot, so you do have that ability in case of a recount?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the state of Michigan, I don't know that we'll ever not go paperless, or that we would go without paper, uh, because that, so you always have that backup for the recount. And also, this will be scanning each ballot, so we'll all, also have the backup, but we'll also have the pictures of every ballot that goes through, so.
Thank you. And then I have one other question. Um, you were talking about the, um, the results transmission, um, with the flash reader/writer.
Yeah.
Um, with that, and with the encryption, with that technology, will you be able to check your numbers against the numbers that the precinct had originally at following that transmission as well?
Yes, because as I stated before, eleven o'clock the next morning, they will bring in those numbers in paper on their reports, uh, with those drives, and so we'll be able to compare, uh, what they've sent us and what they're actually bringing in to us.
Thank you.
And that's part of what the board of canvassers does, too?
Yes, and the board of canvassers meets at one o'clock after every election, so.
Okay.
It's a pretty good deal. I mean, we're getting away clean, reasonable, and as well as the local municipalities, so that's a good thing. that's a good thing.
A lot of, yeah, we have, I think we have a motion in support of that.
We do.
Good. A lot of information there, okay. Quick call, roll, please.
Commissioner Jaques?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Batser?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Next item on the Ways and Means Agenda was the Arcadia Bluffs LLC request to reduce the soil erosion permit fee. Rob Carson, who just wandered in.
I'm sorry, no underwear, where you went.
Rob Carson, County Planning Director, appeared before the committee to discuss a request from Arcadia Bluffs LLC to reduce the soil erosion and sedimentation control permit fee for the Arcadia Bluffs Golf Course Expansion project. The fee, based on the size of the project, is $15,800, which has been paid by Arcadia Bluffs LLC. The only manner in which the fee can be reduced is through action by the County Board of Commissioners. And I was having to see about that. The permit is for a new 18-hole golf course being constructed on northeast corner of M22 and 13 Mile Road, 308 acres. Mr. Carson does not recommend the reduction of the fee, which is set by the guidelines of the state, as it is a very large commercial development, and he expects the soil erosion officer to spend approximately 250 hours on the project, which would also set precedence for future developments. It was moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Schaefer, to deny the request from Arcadia Bluffs LLC to reduce the soil erosion and sedimentation control permit fee for the Arcadia Bluffs Golf Course Expansion. All members of the committee were in support. I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in support. Any questions? Mr. Carson, would you like, I guess I'd like to have a little bit more information.
Yeah, sure. Well, my, my recommendation is primarily based on the precedents that would be set. Any future commercial industrial development that's large-scale in nature is gonna likely come before this board and ask for a reduction in fee for soil erosion control. Our fee structure is based on the State of Michigan guidelines. We are not out of line with what is standard amongst other counties throughout the State of Michigan. We understand that this is not moving earth to place impervious surfaces, construct buildings, parking lots, but they are still moving substantial amount of earth. Our soil erosion control officer is going to have to spend quite a bit of time out there making sure that they phase it properly, because we do not want them to open up 308 acres of soil all at one time. We'd like them to do it in multiple phases. That requires a lot of inspection time. And for those of you who are aware of what happened with the initial Arcadia Bluffs Golf Course and a large portion of that dune falling into Lake Michigan, and the liability that was burdened by that, we, we do not want to see any type of issue occur in the future with any type of commercial industrial development that moves a large amount of soil and disturbs a lot of, large amount of acreage, and then ask for a fee reduction due to that.
The committee was very strong in supporting the rejection of the, of the question. It sets a bad precedent, and it also puts a situation where you can have all kinds of projects coming in saying, you know, we think the fees are too high, we want you to change it. And it is reasonable, given the size of this project, and it's really a drop in the bucket compared to the total project, so setting the precedent is not a good idea.
I would say, and I think Rob would agree with me, that if you're going to allow a reduced fee on this project, you need to, you need to review your schedule, your fee schedule and change your fee schedule. There's, there's nothing unusual about this, about this request, other than they just think it's too high. Yeah, and going through past expenditures, reviewing our budget over the last since I've been here, we maintain a very strict budget in terms of what we're bringing in, in terms of fees, and what we're paying out for our soil erosion control officer. And this, this could have a major impact for the county, could be, if we do end up setting precedents and we do end up dropping fees, either the fee schedule or for specific developments, we may not start covering our costs in the long run here, so that's something to consider.
All right, there's a motion and a support. Further questions?
Well, I just wanted to mention, and Rob had mentioned it earlier, about what had happened there previously, and I know that between our soil erosion officer, prosecutor, and a whole host of other people, that we spent way, way more time and money on the Arcadia Bluffs project and the soil erosion permit last time than what they paid for the permit.
Well, that's a much different circumstance. This is not on the Bluffs, but, you know, I don't think we have to worry about that happening in this case, but, yeah, it's understood. All right.
And a 20-day charter.
All right, quick call, roll, please.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batser?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaques?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item on the Ways and Means Agenda was the Resolution 2017-6, which accepts Manistee County Remonumentation Peer Group Members and Contractors for 2017. Rob Carson, County Planning Director, requested review and consideration to the resolution 2017-6, which accepts Manistee County Remonumentation Peer Group Members and Contractors for 2017. Funds to pay peer group meetings and contractual work will come from the remonumentation grant received from the State of Michigan totaling $39,418. Index D is the proposed resolution, 2017-6. Index E is a Monumentation Survey or Professional Services Agreement. Index F is a Peer Review Professional Services Agreement. It was moved by Mr. Schaefer, seconded by Mr. Schmidt, to recommend the approval of the resolution 2017-6, which accepts Manistee County Remonumentation Peer Group Members and Contractors for 2017. All members of the committee were in support. I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion, support. This is just an annual process that we do.
Mr. Carson, could you give me additional information?
Our county survey is here as well.
That's true.
All right, yeah. Pat, you want to add anything or not? I mean, don't feel the need, you know?
Oh, I just know, it's the same program that's been running for, you know?
Twenty years.
About 20 years now, so we're just, we apply for the grant and we follow the guidelines of the grant, and, yeah, we don't expend any county funds on it, so it's 100% funded through the grant.
Quick call, roll, please.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batser?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaques?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
The next item on the Agenda of the Ways and Means Committee is the Filer Township's request for financial assistance in the defense of a property tax appeal filed against Filer Township by Taxing Corporation America in June of 2015. Revenue and consideration of correspondence dated February 24, 2016, 17, from Mr. Terry Walker, Filer Township Supervisor, requesting financial assistance from the county and other taxing jurisdictions affected in the defense of a property tax appeal filed against Filer Township by Taxing Corporation America in June of 2015. The bond being requested from the county would be $7,290, which is 12.57% of the total defense fee of $58,065.79, which was paid by the township. This fee has been determined based on proportionate share of millages received by each taxing jurisdiction. County Administration, the Equalization Director, and Chairman Donce attended a meeting on this issue on April 6, 2017. For the purpose of further discussion on this request, which is in index G, Mr. Kaminsky explained that the county has financially assisted Filer Township in cases before, but the county was involved at the beginning of the cases. With this case, the county was not involved until the end of the case. Mr. Kaminsky understands there was a settlement agreement in which both parties agreed upon. Mr. Albert, the Equalization Director, added that amounts were unknown as to what was asked for, what was appraised, and, for the outcome. Mr. Schaefer indicated that it is not a lot of money, and if Filer didn't pursue it, then less taxes would have been collected, which the county benefits from as well. Discussion as to the county being informed at the beginning of the case, whether to enter next time, there may be no assistance. It was moved by Mr. Schaefer, seconded by Mr. Bergstrom, to recommend the county financially assist Filer Township for $7,290 for the defense of a property tax appeal filed against Filer Township by PCA due to 2015. Bergstrom and Schaefer were in support, Mr. Schmidt was not. This issue is one of those where, and the point made that instead of getting in on the front end, we got it passed in, in the back at the end of the process, not the right way to do it. They should have approached all the local units of government to get their support first, and so I see that as a concern, but at the same time, I'm reminded of a statement quoted by Ben Franklin, "Either we all hang together, or surely we'll all hang separately." And I think it applies here, too, in that if we don't support, and if other end public entities don't support us, when we have to fight these requests to change the taxes...
Is there a motion in regard to this?
Oh, my goodness.
Then we can have, then we can have discussion.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to support it.
Okay, is there support for that motion?
I'll support it.
Okay, we have motion, support. Now, any more debate?
I said my piece, yeah. I, I voted against it, because before I became a commissioner, I was on the Board of Review, and there are many cases that go to the tribunal. This one didn't make it that far. But if we're setting a precedent, we're gonna start paying this fee, we're gonna have to have a line item in our budget every year to pick up these appeals that are going for our townships. That's why I'm against setting this precedent.
I can give you a little bit of background, especially for some of the newer commissioners. I, I believe, since I've been here, Russ, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we've only assisted in two cases. One was the, with Filer Township and the Tandu tax appeal that went on for years and years and years, and we didn't only spend $7,000 on that case, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. And ended up getting some of that money back, of which we put, you'll see that we do have a legal defense restricted fund balance of a little over $100,000, I think, that is core, that we kind of set aside, the board decided at that time, let's set it aside for issues like this. The, the issue here is a little bit different, and we also helped, I think, Stronach Township, maybe with the Martin Marietta case, it seems like that was, that was one of them. But you, you need to kind of pick and choose those, because what Mr. Schmidt said is correct, there's, there's all kinds of tax tribunal cases, or, or, we just had one with Arcadia, Arcadia Bluffs actually approached us, or not Arcadia Bluffs, Arcadia Township approached us in a tax appeal a couple of years ago, that I think ended up getting settled before we ever got involved, correct?
Correct.
So, you know, it is good, in Filer's defense, they did mention this to me at a meeting, after a meeting, Terry, Terry Walker mentioned it to me a year or two ago, and I said, well, you need to send us a letter, you need, we need to, you know, make a decision for, and that letter didn't come until after the fact, no. So, and I did say that at the meeting, that Mr. Donce and I and Mr. Albert were present at, and they understand that, and there is probably some more stuff coming down the road, but my, my initial recommendation was to not pay it because of the fact that it didn't, that it came in late, after the fact, and we should be involved in the decision-making as to when to settle, if we should settle, if we should go all the way to the tax tribunal, and we should, you know, pick and choose which ones we want to, want to participate in. So, that's kind of my...
As Commissioner Bergstrom alluded to, it's a bit of a process question also, before and after. You know, we've had, I know in the Kettle Hole Drain, I think a lot of us kind of wanted to get that put behind us, and we may have not made the best decision, or possibly even the correct decision in regard to that, but we did vote to, on that particular issue, to close, to try to close the books on it, and it's still not closed. If we were on the front end of this, I'd be possibly in support, but on the back end, I can tell you, from my personal perspective, is no, I, I don't think we should, and I'm not so sure we can.
You know, at the committee meeting, I made myself perfectly clear that we need to make sure that all the players realize that we will not do this again. They do not bring us in the front end, don't come to us after you've spent the money, and expect us to, to help. That needs to be well-known, that if you play by yourself, then you're gonna pay by yourself, also.
Well, I guess I would echo that. I would say a louder, a louder voice in regard to that would be to deny it, because that would get the more attention as opposed to a check going that way to cover costs.
But it doesn't sound like we adhere to our own process repeatedly. So, you know, it's like, okay, so we're drawing the line in the sand now, why now? And that'll be something that will be up for debate continuously. I think what Brooke is saying is like, this is where the line is, and now every county is gonna get a letter, or every group is gonna, township is gonna get a letter from us that states this will be the way we're handling it, and if you come to us after you have engaged in this, you, you, you not say there won't be any support, but say that support will be...
Not financial.
Yeah.
I have some questions about this. Does Filer Township have a representative available today?
We didn't, we didn't ask, we didn't ask anyone.
I'm also wondering what other counties have done in regards to similar issues, because this can't be the first time that something like this has come up.
This is not a county issue, just so you know.
Right.
The only reason it becomes a county issue is because the townships, they have appeals, and you wouldn't probably do this for small appeals, residential type appeals, you would only do it for large business or industrial type appeals, you know, otherwise, we'd be involved in every appeal. Every township is responsible for those. The issue comes in, is the township says, should we spend all this money fighting these cases when we don't lose that much? We lose a mil and a half, and the county loses 5.5 mils, plus all of our special millages, and the college loses money, and the schools lose money, and, and so they then say, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna fight this unless we get some help. And so, it's really not our, our issue at all, but we stand to lose the most if, if they don't fight some of these. And so, it's, 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 it's kind of a catch-22.
So, I, I understand the township's perspective on this. What I'm wondering, I'm sure that other counties have dealt with similar issues where a township has a lot of costs associated with defending these sorts of tax appeals, and I'm wondering if we have some other comparisons with other counties on, on how they've handled it.
I remember when we were getting involved in the Tandu issue, we asked other counties what they were doing, and many counties said they just point-blank say no at all. They, they did not participate in tax tribunal cases. And then I think, I don't know if Midland County helped in the Midland, in the Dow Chemical one, that was going on at the same time that the Tandu one was going on, I can't remember if Midland County actually spent some money, but they were, it was the same type of situation where they would have lost a ton of money. But it's really not a...
The Tandu, have we had other units of government participated in?
Yes, I actually was very involved in that. I have a file this thick with Tandu stuff.
Do, how many, how many entities, and what was it total?
Well, everyone that gets, that gets tax, tax revenue, with the exception of the schools, the schools did not participate. Because what happens with the schools, I don't understand it exactly, but the schools get reimbursed, whether they lose or not. Roger could probably explain how that's, how that happens, but they get...
Per pupil funding.
Yeah, they get, they get reimbursed...
Everything, everything but the debt.
Right.
They would lose their, their debt.
So, they chose not to participate in the Tandu, because they, and so, as a result, the county ended up picking up the majority of that expense. It was hundreds of thousands of dollars, it wasn't small.
And roughly, the other units of government, what, how much do you think they told them in terms of what they put in?
Well, I couldn't tell you, I could go back and look at that file, but I mean, it was all based on...
Millage.
On millage. You know, if the cost was, if we received a bill for $10,000, I was in charge of paying that entire bill, if I remember, no, Filer would pay the entire bill, and I would bill, I actually was the one that did all the billing to all the local entities, and so I would divide that bill on proportionate millage. Like 5.5 mils of that $10,000 would go to, you know, would be a certain percentage of 50% of the cost. So, we'd pay 5,000, then medical care and library and West Shore would all pay a proportionate share based on what their millage was. So, everyone, you know, someone like Conservation District, who didn't have a millage at that time, would pay very little in comparison to the county, and that's kind of how Filer's done this bill also, or this request.
So, Tom, I have one other question about this. Do we have a line item in our budget that we, I think you talked a little bit about the legal fund restricted fund balance?
We don't have a line item in our general fund, but we would pay for it out of our general fund and transfer that money at the end of the year if, if needed, from that restricted, I mean, we basically reduce that restricted fund balance that's for legal defense.
So, there is money that would be available potentially, should we make the decision to pay this bill?
Yes, that's really what it was set up for, right? Correct, Russ?
All right, then I guess, from what I can tell, it sounds like you requested earlier in the process that Filer Township submit some information to you with the request that the county be more involved with this process, correct?
I, I did, in talking with, with Mr. Walker, I think I said, well, you know, we can't, we're gonna need something from you officially.
And that information was not provided?
And I think he was going, I think he was gonna do that eventually, and it just, this case may have gone, you're never gonna get, I don't think you're ever going to, Roger, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, you're never gonna get involved right at the very front end, because I think they're gonna find, there's gonna be a time period where they're gonna say, do we fight this or not fight it? It may go a little ways, and then say, well, maybe we need to get other entities involved. But this came after the settlement was already completed.
So, from what I understand, it sounds like you requested information from them earlier in the process from Filer Township, and that information was not provided?
Well, yeah, not officially, but in discussion.
So, it was, it was very informal, but you did make a request for the information?
Not officially.
Or, or a request that they submit formal information?
When he talked to me, it was at a... When he talked to me, it was at a undercover meeting. Afterwards, we're standing in the back of the room, and he said, you know, I've got this, we've got this tax appeal, we might want the county to be involved in. And I said, well, send me some stuff, and we'll have to take it through the process like, like we're doing right now.
Okay.
And I never really heard from him after that.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to get the Equalization Director to give us some information, what the, what the results would have been, if we'd not gone to tribunal, how much less taxes we would have gotten. Do you have any figures on that?
Well, again, when we were talking at the Ways and Means Committee, I didn't get a copy of their preliminary appraisal to see what numbers they were looking at.
You know, that's one of the things that would have been nice, hadn't been involved at the beginning, we could have had some input and said, yes, we agree that it's not supportable, I think you should settle. Or, we could have looked at and said, hey, I, I think we've got a really great case, I think we should fight this. And so, I, I think they mentioned in their letter that it was about $300,000 divided between all the units from what they were asking for and what they settled for. So, depending if you think they got a good settlement or, or not, and we really, you know, without looking at the appraisals and all the information.
No input from anybody else.
I don't, I don't know that.
What, what happened in this case, from what I heard at the meeting, and Roger, you were there, correct me if I'm wrong on this, is it really turned out to be not defendable. The, the township assessor, or the expert assess, that, that did the appraisal, realized that the, the request that was being made by Filer was somewhat valid. And so, that's when they talked settlement. And they got a settlement that was, that was probably better than what PCA initially asked for, but less than what would have, you know, if Filer, if PC wouldn't have appealed, they would have paid more.
Overpaid the money.
Yeah. And so, I mean, and in that case, I mean, why would, why would we fight it if we, if your appraiser comes to you and says, well, they really have a case here, they have a point. You know, and, and that's kind of what I heard at that.
That's, that's what the reassessor said, that the equipment was very old, it's, it's all, it's so obsolete that you can't buy parts for it, they have to machine their own. When it breaks, they make their own parts to fix it and stuff. It, you know, if you put it on the market, no one's going to buy that equipment because it's so obsolete that, you know, it's, it's really not worth anything unless, except to PCA, they can use it in their day-to-day operation. But you would never dismantle it and sell it, because nobody would buy that old equipment.
So, you're saying there is, there was a settlement discussed? This is, I'm getting confused here a little bit.
There, there's been a settlement.
Yeah. So, in this discussion, it sounds like there's a lot of information we really don't know. We don't have the actual assessor's information or anything like that. So, if there is a settlement, they're asking us to help with the cost, but we don't know what that settlement is.
Well.
We know what the settlement is. Absolutely. Because the whole process has been completed, and we have had no input. The bills are there, and they're saying, this is what it cost us to defend this.
Right.
This is what we would like you guys to pay as other taxing entities.
So, what was the actual settlement? What, do we know the actual?
Fifty, fifty-eight.
Well, no, $58,000 was what they spent.
That's a cost.
It was about $340,000, about $300,000?
I think on the real property, they reduced, they agreed to reduce the value about $200, or $2, $2 million. And on the personal property, I don't have the numbers, but it was, they agreed to reduce the personal property about $3 million. So, they, they agreed to reduce the value between the real and personal about $5 million. And initially, PC was asking for a much larger reduction, but they agreed to not even, they dropped the 2016 appeal on the personal, and, you know, they had some, you know, a lot of agreements to come up with this settlement.
The other part of this is that, you know, we're only, you're only discussing paying our portion based on the 5.5 mils that we get in our general fund. There was also the library, the medical care facility, 911, Council on Aging, Conservation District, West Shore College, the schools, they would all have to agree to submit, to, to pay. And, and, and they're kind of all watching. I was told by the, by the financial person, by Scott Ward, I don't know what his title is at the, at the college, that they're kind, the college kind of follows with the counties. So, everybody's kind of waiting to see, what's the county board going to do? The county board pays, then we'll probably pay. Our portion is, is the highest. I mean, the, the, you know, some of our millage entities, we're talking about a couple hundred dollars, or $700, or $500. It's not going to break any of us, but.
But that's still not the point.
It's, it's not the point, and, and I understand that.
Well, one thing I'd like to bring up, though, if this was to pass, we're going to have one, we're going to ask for some money, and I'm going to tell you who it's going to be. It's going to be Maple Grove Township on that road commission bill, and they spent a lot of money in legal fees to try to get that straightened out before we finally sold it. They're entitled for the money too, though. That's why we, I don't want to set this precedence.
And Filer's going to be coming back on another issue possibly, but it'll be on the front end, it will not be on the back end. And then, then again, it's process, that, that has implications.
I agree.
You do have to kind of, I mean, I know it would be nice to just have a policy that says, we're going to do this and this, but you almost have to consider these on a case-by-case basis. But I think one of your conditions should be, we need to be on the front end, so that, so that you are a part of the decision-making process. If you're going to participate financially, what we did in the Tandu case is, Richard Reed was the attorney in this matter. And for years, we had meetings where everyone was invited, the county, all the funding entities of the county, the college, and we all sat down and decided, here's what's going to happen. We sat down and settlement negotiations with Tandu. We were in on every aspect of it.
I, I, I agree. I, I just, I want to make sure that we have a task, you know, whether this passes or does not pass, I think we still need to send a formal notice out, you know, following this, all the townships that say, we are taking a strong stance on this, and this is how it's going to be.
I'll work with, with Roger.
We could, we could adopt that at our next meeting and have it sent out. All right. We have a motion and a support for reimbursement to Filer Township for a tax appeal.
I think it was $7,000.
We've got quite likely debate on this. Anything left? All right. Clerk, call the roll, please. By the way, let's just clarify, yea would be in support of the pain, and nay would be to deny.
Commissioner Batson?
No.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Aye, yes.
Commissioner Dantz?
No.
Commissioner Goodman?
No.
Commissioner J. Bush?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Schaefer?
No.
Fails.
Request denies.
I will prepare a letter and maybe discuss it with one of the committees in the next month or so.
All right. We do have a, I'd like to suspend the Ways and Means Committee minutes, or meet, minutes for a few moments, and go to our 10 o'clock Personnel Committee report with Joe Coleman, because he's here, and we've got him scheduled. And it has to do with.
Bank contribution.
Yeah.
Can you turn?
I can't.
Well, with that, Karen, I'll let you, because it's your chair.
Mr. Coleman from the medical care facility, as interim administrator, appeared before the committee to present and discuss the new MERS adoption agreement for the medical care facility. Mr. Coleman indicated that the purpose of the agreement is to enroll employees hired after April 1st, 27th, to a defined contribution plan. He reported that this has been agreed upon by their union, and it is noted that there is a three-year vesting schedule on the medical care, in which the medical care contributes 3%, and the employee can contribute a minimum of 1% to 10%, unless they are a casual or a seasonal employee. It was reported that the medical care facility is 73% funded for their MERS at this time. So, it was moved by Commissioner Donson, seconded by Commissioner Bergstrom, to recommend the adoption of the new MERS defined contribution plan for the medical care facility employees hired on, on or after April 1st, 27th. Do I have that motion? Yes, then the motion was carried.
So, do we have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do we have support?
Support.
Okay. Motion and support. Any discussion? Any questions for Mr. Coleman? It's kind of self-explanatory and straightforward. Okay. Karen Dunn, clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner J. Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
There you go, Joe. Didn't have to say anything.
Thank you very much.
I have a question for you, yes.
Too late.
It has to do with the medical care facility. I lost the paper that I added in. It's a fund that's set up at the medical care facilities for the state. I'll catch you later, because I had to wrote down this to ask you this question.
Okay. Do you have my email or phone number?
I can find it.
Okay.
I won't, I won't have a problem.
Well, as long as you're here, maybe there has been some discussions about medical care facility and some questions. One of them is occupancy currently, I think we are at like 85% or 83%.
Year to date, we're right around 85%. Last week, we were up in the 80s, but we sent four people home on Monday, two people died last night and this morning, so we're actually at 83 today.
83%, okay. And you did have your audit, which went well. There were no identified difficulties.
There, there were a few concerns, and we've turned in a correction for those.
Can you just highlight a couple of those with, I know some, a couple was in regards to that funding. Well, you just, what, what were the two primary areas? Can you remember? You can bring it up again with me.
There's, there's always a potential conflict of interest with the, the maintenance director and the finance director are married.
That's, that's right.
That's one. Unless I were to create a position for IT, we're always going to have that, or if one of them left, that would fix it. But they're both excellent employees, and we do not want either one of them to leave. So, what we've done to mitigate some of that is to remove him from anything to do with banking, and so that he can't, he has nothing to do with setting passwords or anything with banking, but he's still pretty involved in our medic, electronic medical records of pretty much every other aspect of IT for the facility.
Personal funds, is that, you have a question about personal funds? Which is, it's really kind of a common problem among facilities?
Yeah, there's a, it wasn't really like that, but there, there's credit balances that we, when we switch software, and it was before I came, that there was old software and the new software weren't communicating, and we're still working on figuring out which credit balances are real. And, and there will be, I think we're talking probably about $40,000, $50,000 in total that we, you know, if it turns out they're real, that we will have to repay.
Oh, your auditor, they're very systematic, huh?
Well, they, they did, they did look at that, but we, we still have to hand calculate and hand, you know, kind of search.
Yeah.
Because the softwares were not compatible, so you have to take the old software information and run it against the current software information and do a cross-analysis.
Yeah. And, and we don't really have access to the old software anymore, so we've got, we've got a company, Veracity, working on fixing that part, so we'll be able to get those numbers. And then another thing they identified was, we had a couple employees who were not paid at the correct rate, they were not given an increase, or at least a correct increase when they were supposed to. And so, we've rectified that by, you know, issuing checks to them, and then complete audit to make sure that there were no others affected.
So, what was the big, is that question?
Let's have it.
Well, I was in Lansing yesterday. There's a fund called the CMS Fund. It's a fund that, it's a saddle that they had in Lansing, it's for all the fines that were collected.
Oh, yeah.
Can you put in for that money? There's $12 million there, that's why I was kind of wondering.
I don't know that there's a process to put in for it. I mean, it's, it's the civil mon, it's the CMP fund. So, that, they get that fund when they find a crap out of a nursing home for deficiencies and.
See, that's, that's an example, the saddle sitting out there with $12 million, he has no access to it.
No, those aren't, that does, it gets input into that, that pot, but that's also part of CMS and their recuperation. You know, sometimes, unfortunately, some of the auditors, and I don't know if it's all states, I don't think Michigan has this yet, but there are bonuses and, and reimbursements that come with some of these audit persons.
Yeah.
So, I think that fund is supporting some of that.
I have seen that system abused, you know?
Yes.
It's like a big moneymaker.
Yes.
I saw one facility, almost had, had an $80,000 fine for something that was ridiculous. And, and we appealed the, and the citation was in immediate jeopardy because someone fell and subsequently died from a subdural hematoma after refusing treatment for it. So, the facility got fined $80,000, and there is an appeals process for that, so we went through the appeals process. We won our appeal with MPRO, which is a peer review organization, and the state overturned it because they didn't have to accept MPRO's findings. That was kind of an abuse of that system. Yeah, the money's there, the ombudsman would like to have access to that money and decide where it goes. I'm sure it'll be put to good use.
I just want, I just want to bring your attention, in case you didn't know about it, there's a way you can get some, but go for it.
If I find out there.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, let's, uh, let's take a recess to 10:35, 10:38. 10:38 would give us 10 minutes, so let's, well, we suspended Ways and Means, and we've got Bob Daniels here for the 10:15, we'll suspend this one also.
You okay, Bob?
We are. It's like being in outer space.
And there are a little bit.
I should have gone before you said that.
Okay, it's not my first county committee.
I gotta go home.
Just don't flush.
Go next door. Those people all over there.
Later. I'm interrupting.
I'm not kidding you, when that, when that happened in fall, they closed it off, you know, you want to use that. They say, well, you have to go down to the, the grocery store and gas station.
Right behind the bushes and all.
It's like a. And then, and then we all get arrested for indecent.
Well, we're at the second half of the April county commission meeting, I hope you're having as much fun as I am.
Commissioner from Lake County?
When did you say that was not the election?
Tomorrow. Commissioner from Lake County is going to be on CNN. They're interviewing, or they did come and interview him, so I guess he, he dropped a tree, and he was the only opposed Democrat in Lake County who won.
Because Lake County did the biggest flip in the presidential election.
In the entire nation.
Yes.
The entire.
Really?
Well, yes.
Now, the clerk went.
You have to be scared of the state, and see why. You know, when you're looking at somebody who's going to.
So, that's what they're interviewing him about, was to flip in the county?
Okay. We're going to call the meeting back to order. In light of the fact that there's no other action items on Personnel Committee, a motion will be in order to accept the Personnel Committee minutes as presented.
Covering the motion.
Motion, support, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, we're up to our 10:15. Mr. Bob Daniels, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerk, members of the Commission. Mr. Kaminsky, I appreciate you giving me some of your time today to bring you up to date on where we stand with the Council on Aging and the whole Olsons project. Things are happening fast and furious. When I spoke to you back in January, it's hard to believe it's been three months already, but when I was here, I used that old Chinese proverb, well, may you live in interesting times. Well, if my life gets any more interesting, I'm going to be doing these from a hospital bed. But anyway, there's a huge amount going on, tremendous amount of progress made, some as recently as three o'clock yesterday afternoon and last evening. So let me give you the biggest update, first of all. We have received notification from the Department of Agriculture that our loan request has been approved for the project. Now, that is contingent upon a couple of things that are beyond my pay grade to deal with. That is Congress passing either a long-term continuing resolution or an actual budget. And then the Federal Department of Ag releasing money down to the state level. But when they get the money, they have approved our project and it's part of their planned budget. So in other words, we have the funding we need to go forward with this. The second thing was last night, the City Council had a two-hour session, working session strictly on the Council on Aging Pilter Pilot Request. On over two hours. Unfortunately, I spent most of my time up at the podium talking about it and lots of questions from the City Council. I'm not sure exactly where they stand. I know we certainly have some members on the council that are strongly supportive of it and some who are still on the fence. And they will vote on it next Tuesday. The developer has told us that if their pilot or pilfer is not approved, that then they will have to walk on the deal if the numbers aren't there for them. And so they will pull out, which will then kind of more than likely end our Department of Agriculture funding because that was based upon the concept of a senior village. So if you support this and you know anybody on the City Council, I am informally requesting that you pick up the phone and talk to them and see where they stand on it and express your opinion on it. I realize this is not a county play at all, but we are the Majesty County Council on Aging, which is why I'm here to talk to you. My focus for the last three months has been almost entirely on the corner of Memorial Drive and US thirty-one. But we are still a countywide organization and Sarah Blessler keeps all of the activities going on around the county while the few of us are focused on this major project. We have worked with the developer's architect to where we're getting to the very final stages. On the design of the building, what we're going to have, we've helped a number of open houses at the Senior Center where we've informed the public and taking tons and tons of questions about it, about what it's going to be. Again, the first phase will be the conversion of the existing Olsons Grocery Store into the Senior Center and the new grocery store. The second phase will be the building of the first forty-two unit apartment building, all of which at this point will be subsidized. In other words, they will be at an income level of twenty-two thousand dollars or less. We just received information on, I guess it was the end of last week, that there's some recent data that's come out, an income level for Majesty County. The median income for people sixty and older in Majesty County in 2014 was twenty thousand dollars. The income level on these apartments is twenty-two thousand, meaning that more than half of the senior citizens in Majesty County would qualify for the low-income support on this. That's not looking at the deep numbers in terms of resources and things like that. There are multiple other things that play into this, but just looking at the income level, the senior population in Majesty County is completely suited for this particular development. As part of their preparation and working with MISHDA, the developers had an independent party come in and do an assessment of the need. And the need is off the chart. To the need for this type of housing, there's no question. Their application, their, meaning the developer's application is going into MISHDA for the funding that they will be looking for from them to make this happen. They won't receive word on that until July, but they're scoring quite high in their own internal scoring. This is a point system, MISHDA uses a point system and you get things for blockability, for your percentage of low income, for the income situation of the county and in twenty-seven hundred other factors, I'm making up a number. But there's a whole range of things that are weighed and that's how MISHDA helps make their decisions on this. So we are expecting to hear on that in July. However, the developer will go ahead on the project without the MISHDA approval. They're willing to take the chance and start the work on the Olsons building. Now, on that score, the Council on Aging Board will meet this Friday at ten AM to vote on signing the purchase agreement with the developer. We've been back and forth with their attorneys for a month now. We finally have all the documents that we were concerned about at a state where we're comfortable with them. And the Council on Aging Board will be meeting at ten o'clock Friday, we will discuss it and vote. Presuming we go ahead and say, yes, we will do the purchase agreement, then the developer will close with Olsons and buy the property. And we'll be looking at construction starting sometime in May, in all likelihood, the construction company is ready to go. The first step will be to divide the building into two pieces. And for those of you who remember, the Kroger store, a wall will go up essentially where the original Kroger store was. And that half will be the grocery store and the back half will be the new Council on Aging building. The existing wiring, which is the real heavy-duty stuff, will stay up on the grocery store. There will be new electric and water service brought in for the Council on Aging. It'll be completely rewired for us, we'll have all LED lights and things like switches that turn lights off when people aren't in the room for so many minutes, making it as ethologically safe and as low cost as we can to operate. We agreed yesterday with North Sky fundraising or whatever, they're the fundraising training and fundraising arm of Rotary Charities in Traverse City. They will be leading our capital campaign. We have a number of volunteers within the Council on Aging and not only the board members, but other volunteers who will be working and leading this. And we will be starting a capital campaign during the month of May, attempting to raise a significant amount of money. Everything we raise can go for enhancements that we're not going to get in the basic building that we're getting from the developer and will allow us to lower the amount of money that we're going to borrow for this to do it. We are right now at the point where the rent from the grocery store just about covers, but there are things that we would like to increase and improve in terms of the building itself that we can't do right now because the numbers just aren't working. Again, our goal has been that we don't use any of the village money that we get for the building. Village money will stay driving all of our programs, not for use in the building itself. That between the loan and the capital campaign and one of the things that the building will give us with the new kitchen and all the space is the ability to do things like host wedding receptions in there. We will have plenty of space and a huge commercial kitchen. We believe that will generate several thousand dollars a month in additional interview income. The pickleball courts won't be free, they won't be expensive, but they won't be free. And we plan to run those in the evening. We're looking at a commercial bingo operation and things like that as additional revenue sources for us to help build up a reserve fund, to help enhance the programs we want to deliver and keep us and get us into this beautiful building and get it going. We will have final meetings with the architect for the final decisions on the interior over the next few weeks. I think the next one's set up for maybe fifth. And it's going ahead, there's a lot happening and a lot that's going to happen in the next few weeks. And before I forget, because I will if I don't throw this out right now, we've been working with the city on having a lunch with a city council member once a month. And we would like to extend the same option to you on a different day, have a county board member come in once a month. We have lunch every day at the Senior Center, we have different activities going on. And just work with Sarah, if you're interested, and have a county board member come in and sit down and talk with the people at the Senior Center once a month. It's just an open invitation, I've meant to offer it before and just keep forgetting. But it's been working really well with the City Council and we'd love to open it up to the county board too to come in. Or county officials, Joe, you would certainly be welcome anytime for us, I guess you left. But anyway, not just to the county board members, but to the county officials also. Come on in and have lunch with the seniors and talk with them, hear what their concerns are, hear from them directly instead of hailing through Sarah or me or anybody else. So, well, any questions?
Couple of, I'd like to give a couple of comments. One, I looked back at our November meeting, we passed resolution twenty sixteen dash twenty-eight, a letter of support for this project. I guess all I could say and suggest to the board is if we were to reaffirm that commitment today in light of the ongoings and some of the discussion in regard to it, I mean, we earned out anything, I think it was unanimous support last time. If we were to say that again, kind of like having, readdressing or saying our vows again at a wedding reception, we could do that.
I think we need to send a letter to the City Council. Because this is such an important project.
The city will be voting next Tuesday.
I wrote that down, I thought it'd be important to maybe be there to say something for you.
That would be absolutely fine, we will take any support. We've been known to pack the house on other City Council meetings. And I'm not sure if we will do it that day or not. I mean, I'm sure that decision is one that the numbers of people in the audience are going to make any difference, but support from a group such as yourself will certainly be greatly appreciated. And it's going to be close, I mean, I don't see the vote being off by more than one or two people. I can count to four and I think I'm still there, but it's going to be close.
I think that what Brooke said is, I think it's very important and we should maybe put in a letter, a formal letter that says, we have already provided support to this. We want to let you know that our support continues. And, you know, be happy to deliver that at the meeting if the board agrees.
I have a couple of questions for you. On the, break down the income limits in the housing project. It's going to be forty units, is that correct?
Forty-one, forty-two, depends on how many are two bedroom, how many are one bedroom, but forty, forty-two is a good number.
All right, and what is the breakout in terms of income levels on this project?
You have to have twenty-two thousand dollars or less to get into this first building. Now, don't forget there are plans for second and possibly a third building on the property. At this point, the second building is not known, it may be one hundred percent market rate, it may be some percentage of market rate. The competition for the fund, and I know this is a long answer to what, but the reason that it's described right now as one hundred percent low income is because it got the developer extra points with MISHDA for doing that. And that's the only reason they went to one hundred percent, that twenty-two thousand dollars or less. But again, more than half the senior population of Majesty County, the people who will be eligible for this building are under twenty-two thousand dollars already. We knew that intuitively, the people we deal with on a daily basis. I mean, we see the meals on wheels numbers, we see that I've ridden along, I've delivered meals, I see what the situation these people are living in. And we know that that number's going to be there. So, yes, there's further, and then there's further divisions beyond that where in this first building, it's like ten percent, and I don't remember the exact numbers because this is all the developer's piece, not ours, will be at a very low income level, basically at the poverty level. And then we saw that will be at about a thirteen thousand dollar a year income. And then the top of the first building will be about fifteen thousand. For the program, that's a twenty-two thousand, but to get the extra points from MISHDA, we're going to have lower income people in this. But I really, really hate using that term, lower income, because my father, and he would kill me for saying this, my father fits in that category. And that's, he spent his entire life working in a factory in Majesty, he would not for one nanosecond consider himself low income. He owns his own home, he has no debt, no anything, his money, lots of money in the bank. But on that twenty-two thousand dollar definition, that is not at all unusual for many, many, many senior citizens in Majesty County. So while it is by the state definition of low income, it isn't for a great, great many people around here.
Is the housing unit, didn't you have that built into your prospectus in terms of the income for the cost of the project or not? Is, is any of the funds from the building, the housing unit, whatever you want to call it, going to support the debt that you're going to have for the other building?
Absolutely not.
None.
Completely, completely separate.
Totally based on the store then, the store?
Yes. The rental income that we will get from the grocery store is the biggest piece towards it. Now, there will be joint parking lots, lawn maintenance, things like that, where the grocery store will pay a piece of that, the Council on Aging will pay a piece of that, and part of the rent that the apartment buildings take in. But that's just to cover the cost of parking lot maintenance and things like that. There's nothing, that's just a simple dividing of the cost of between the, you know, between the four or three units involved in this.
So do you want to share the, what are the concerns that the city fathers have, their mothers?
I hate to speak for them, but basically, the developer has to commit to forty-five years of low, of this lower income of the subsidized housing, subsidized rent for this building, forty-five years. MISHDA requires a forty-five-year commitment. The prior pilter pilot ordinance was limited to thirty-five years and ten percent. At the direction of the, or the suggestion of the city manager, the city has now removed that ordinance. So right now, there are no limits whatsoever. The developer has asked for forty-five years at four percent, which makes the numbers work for him. The forty-five years is basically non-negotiable because he has to cover that reduced rent that they're going to be charged. They would lose hundreds of thousands of dollars if that was limited to thirty-five years instead of forty-five years. Because they, and whoever, should they ever sell the building in the future, although the developers have never done this in their history, those restrictions will still carry on and that's part of the MISHDA deal. The four percent, they've talked it over with the city and instead of it being a variable four percent, which would be, you know, as Michigan's income goes up, those income limits on the building will go up. As Michigan's income goes down, the income limits on that building will be down. But they've offered a flat five thousand dollar fixed yearly fee plus two percent. I mean, the numbers work out the same essentially, but what they've given the city is a guarantee of five thousand dollars.
What is the four percent, what are you talking about?
Four percent of the revenue that comes in from the rentals. And they've offered four percent, or they've offered two percent plus a minimum, a floor minimum of five thousand dollars, plus all the utilities. I mean, all the water and everything like that, the police protection, I mean, well, we back up on that. The water system has capability way beyond what the city needs right now. And so this is a real plus for the city to have all these people paying water bills in there. And this is just talking about the apartment buildings, not the Senior Center piece of it. But they see a real advantage to having all of this concentrated in a new building. The fire protection costs are essentially zero because this is going to be a brand-new building, it's going to have fire suppression system in it. The fire department demanded certain types of valves, which the developer already agreed to put into place, and certain key access things, and all that's going to happen. The city believes that they will have more ambulance calls, they're not surprising considering the clientele, but those are all on a fee. So therefore, that actually makes money for the city. The Department of Public Works doesn't see anything in terms, the developer will pay the hookup fees and stuff like that to tie it into the city water system and into the sewer. They can finally do to work on Memorial Drive and the sewer system under it anyway, as part of other development going on.
The county, the counties supportive, this should carry some weight because you're, the county is actually affected by the pilot also. Even somewhat, to some extent, more significantly than the city because the city is actually able to negotiate some payments where the county cannot. So we're providing services to a lot of people, don't realize that, you know, there's still the county clerk's office, the registered deeds office, the jail, the courts. I mean, those are all services that are provided. And I think you as a board are saying the development itself is more important than those extra tax dollars.
Increased, increased.
Increased tax dollars, increased tax base. So, so I would think that your support should carry, should carry quite a bit of weight.
So I actually wanted to speak to that a little bit because I shared a lot of those concerns that I think many members of our community have about the developer paying essentially a reduced tax bill on this piece of property. And I think a lot of people in the community have concerns that businesses who are established in the community or new businesses who come to the community pay the going tax rate and make their business work based on that. This particular project is asking for a vastly reduced tax rate and saying that they're not able to make this project work without that. And I understand those concerns. I actually met with Mr. Taylor about this at the city, the city manager. And he took some time and explained to me that the city had actually done quite a bit of due diligence on this pilot. And they had spent a lot of time consulting their experts, crunching the numbers, going through spreadsheet after spreadsheet after spreadsheet. And the conclusion that they came to is that this developer really can't make this project work without this pilot. And I think to a lot of us, it sounds like the developer's going to be getting a lot of rent. It's a long period of time, you know, I think when we think about where our community was forty-five years ago and where it is now, we're in a really different place than we were forty-five years ago. And I think in forty-five years from now, we'll be in a very different place, but I think that we'll still have that need for senior housing. Currently, we have very little handicapped accessible housing that's available to our seniors in our community throughout the county. in our community throughout the county. So I think that this project really meets that need, and it also helps to provide a community for seniors who want to remain independent, are able to remain independent, and able to have some social interaction with other people as well, with that adjacent senior center. So I think in that way, it's an outstanding project. Also, currently, the Olsons building is vacant. We don't have another good option for that building at this time. And to me, this is a win-win for our community. We have a wonderful senior center that's going to be moving in there. We're going to be having people living there who are able to use our downtown frequently. Dylaride is right there, our farmer's market is right there, we've got other new businesses coming in on Washington Street that will be available there as well. So you've got people who will have some disposable income, who will be spending that money there. So I think that's an advantage as well. It frees up our current senior center, which is in the downtown business district, right on River Street, in a prime location, right across from the Marina. So that building will be available for future development.
Commissioner, may I interject there? The building's already been sold at full asking price. They're just waiting until we move out to take it.
Okay, that's fantastic.
We're the developer who wants to do a commercial building, taxable building.
Excellent. So that will go back on the tax rules again. And then the other portion that I think hasn't been discussed a lot is that we see a real housing need in our community countywide. And something that I hear over and over is that we're having a really difficult time finding housing for people who are moving into our area, families who want to live here, people who are moving into our area and retiring. And so seniors who are moving into this housing complex, this wonderful new facility that we're talking about, will be selling their homes, freeing up those properties, and then those will be going back on the market, and then those properties will actually become uncapped, and the tax rate will be higher for those. So I think the tax, the tax issue, it, I, I think over time it'll actually balance out, and I think, I think it'll be okay. So those are my thoughts.
I should point out that Morton's requested a tax rate from the city most of the same way that DCA did from Filer Township, and the city turned them down. But despite that, Morton's signed a letter of support for this project because they saw the need that their younger factory workers had in finding affordable housing that's reasonably close to their factory. I mean, Morton's could see beyond their own, being upset at being turned down for a tax cut, but still support for this project. And I thought that was huge of them to do that.
Manistee has made the listing in Michigan, I think in the top ten or twenty for retirement area. And so we also know that, on the statistics I'm sure you've pulled, that our aging population is increasing on the west side of Michigan, specifically in Manistee too. So I think that everything that you have offered into this project meets all of the needs current and future for Manistee County.
I should also point out that the Olson store in Cadillac has been empty for over ten years. Well, it's just sat there and gone downhill. They have one vi- potentially viable alternative for that building right now, which is, you could probably guess, the senior center from Cadillac is looking at the Olson store to do a similar project over there. So they're in the very early stages of it, but we are setting the precedent for all of the state on this stuff.
We don't need any more vacant buildings within our DDA or our city, period. That's not a good thing, and this is a way to start filling them up and get the trend going the other way. I guess I would ask the, I'd ask the board what, what their wishes are. I know Brooke you alluded to a letter of support, which I certainly would sign off on. But we, as, as stated earlier, we do have Resolution 2016-28, which we could reaffirm that and give that to Ms. Goodman to take to Tuesday's board meeting. And if I've got time, I'd be more than happy to accompany her also.
And I'd be happy to join you as well.
Was there any motion on that?
I guess, yeah, I guess we go through the process.
I do have a question on, so all these subsidized people, is all the funds gonna come from MISHDA then?
MISHDA.
So they're committing to forty-two or year commitment?
Right, they're, the tax breaks that they provide for this are all geared on the forty-five-year life of the, the low-income people. And that's kind of the projected life of, of a new building, so by forty-five years, you can redo it anyway.
We will do that, and then we will have the supporting, what Trump said, states, the county courts support for the project.
And then we pass that resolution?
Yeah. So, so we're gonna reaffirm again Resolution 2016-28, our county's support for the project. And we will draft some basic letter restating our commitment and support for the project, and will be delivered by a couple of members of the board at minimum. So we'll see what happens with that, and good luck.
If you can make sure you include the housing portion, please make it very clear that you support the housing portion.
What was the entire project?
Yeah.
It's, it's there, it's there.
Great.
All right, a clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Mr. Jaques?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Unanimous.
Would you know if that meeting's the usual seven o'clock start time?
As far as I know, it's seven o'clock next Tuesday.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
One more thing before you sit down.
Sure.
This is the second year in a row now I've had the opportunity to go out on the Meals on Wheels program and visit some of the folks that are taking that function. And for any of you commissioners who haven't done that, you need to, need to do it at least once because it, it really is nice to get out there and, and see the people and, and interact with them. Some of the things they do, and talk about their problems. I spent the whole day at it, and it was, it was a very enjoyable day. I got to carry it.
Thank you. I highly endorse that. Meals on Wheels is a separate program, but they're hand-in-glove with us. I mean, they rent our kitchen, we support them. That will continue in the new building, just as it is now.
Thank you. We're past time, but our next item is gonna be ten-thirty, the health officer, Sarah Olnichak. Can be health officer.
Sorry for the late start, but. No problem. Sarah is sick today, so.
Actually, it'll go a lot quicker.
I'm not gonna show her, you said.
Original, original. So, passing out copies of the Health Department's annual, annual report. Our annual report gives us an opportunity to kind of showcase the successes that the Health Department has accomplished. Within the report, pretty much contains information on the agency's strategic plan, looks at some of the highlights from each of the individual divisions. There is a data supplement that is included in there that contains some of the county-specific data. And kind of in lieu of your prior conversation, the aging population of Manistee County is one of our counties where actually the birth rate is actually much lower than what the death rate is in, in the county. So that is something that's impacted the, the community. Also included in there are two sheets that relate to our community health needs assessment that was just done. One of them is a kind of a thumbs up, thumbs down page, the other is a page that looks like this. The thumbs up, thumbs down document was completed following a phone survey that we did. This was actually data that was gathered back in two thousand and sixteen for this particular piece. We actually partnered with Spectrum Health, and that was doing this same project out in our southern counties. We were able to work with them so that we could do it in our northern counties. So we have actually a ten-county phone survey, which is something that we have not had in extremely long period of time. Generally, we have to rely on state data. The state data that we get from their behavioral risk factor survey typically has about twenty-five to thirty respondents per community, and so it usually, or per county. So it usually takes them about two to three years to put something together in order to get a county-specific data. In this particular case, we actually had four. Each county, there were between four hundred and six hundred respondents to it. So from an accuracy perspective, much more accurate than when you look at thirty respondents per, per county. The thumbs up, thumbs down is just compares Manistee to the rest of the health jurisdiction in here. So the other piece underneath that, the Community Health Needs Assessment Survey, this document actually was the result of focus groups that we did with various community groups in asking them, what was it that they felt was the most important community health need? What was it that they thought should be addressed in the community? And so along the top there, where you see obesity, smoking during pregnancy, you know, drug overdose deaths, inadequate fruits and vegetable consumption, those vary a little bit by county depending upon what the individual county resident thought was important in their, in their community. This document, our Community Health Needs Assessment, was approved by our board at a February meeting. So we have begun work on its sister document, which is our Community Health Improvement Plan. That document will contain all of the objectives, the goals, and the strategies that the Health Department and our partners will be working on for the next three years to actually address what we found in the Community Health Needs Assessment. And so in the past, our prior Community Health Improvement Plan was actually a relatively long document that was kind of overarching. This time around, we actually are gonna have specific county, county pages. So there will be a specific set of county goals and objectives that we will put together. So it'll look a little bit, a little bit different. And then obviously, there'll be one or two overarching public health goals that will be included in there that, that we as the Health Department may be the only entity that's working on. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on that. Community Health Needs Assessment, as I said, was approved, it's out on our website, in case anybody's interested in, in taking a look at it.
I'm, I'm interested in your risk factors. Do you, you know, this is the District Ten comparison, Manistee comparison.
Yep.
About state data. You know, I, you look at things like heavy drinking or binge drinking, which are thirteen point eight percent, which is not, it's not a good statistic, but it's better than what the overall is. I was wondering, I think the states is maybe at, they at twelve or?
The state is a, a little bit lower. Generally, our counties are unfortunately above the state, the state average. If you look at, the one that really stands out is when you look at prenatal smoking rates. Jurisdiction-wide, our average, the average prenatal smoking rate in our jurisdiction is about forty percent compared to the state, which is down around twenty, twenty-five percent. So that is something that, that, you know, not only the Health Department, but our other partners have been working on for an extremely long period of time. And, you know, for whatever reason, you know, we have not been able to adequately address that. And there's a lot of moving pieces with that, and a lot of different things that come into play that really kind of set that up as truly a complex problem. And it's not something any single entity or agency is going to be able to have an impact on. So we do continue to try to work with, with others to address it, and we'll continue to work with others to, to address that.
Karen, are you making a recommendation if they quit the stadium?
Well, I just, you know, I think it's important to see, thumbs up and thumbs down is, is, shows some progress, but yet I don't want people to get the idea that, you know, like poor health condition or health status in our county, our ten-county system, overall nineteen point six percent, not great. But even in Manistee, it's eighteen point two percent, not great. Though it's a thumb up.
Lower than, you know, the whole ten system.
It's still thumbs down.
It's still, yeah.
I was just gonna say, historically, these documents, actually from past years, are actually out on our website also. We do complete these on an annual basis. And generally, we do include, the comparison is to the state data. This time, because of the phone survey that we did, we wanted to compare it to the health jurisdiction.
Yes. I, I, I have to say, your, your data and all your information is wonderful. I used it on grant writing. So it's great statistics and information, and good drill downs too. But I just wanna make everybody aware that thumbs up does not really say, "Oh, you're not coming to the table."
How do we know, how do we know these statistics? How do you know how many people in Manistee County are obese, or cigarette smokers, or heavy drinkers, or?
Again, these are, these are questions that are asked from a phone survey. So it is a, it is a subjective response. As I said, in me, you know, in our ten counties, there were between four and six hundred respondents that we, that we had. And that's generally what the CDC does when, when they do the nationwide community behavioral risk factor survey.
And some of your survey information also comes from your large entities like healthcare facilities. You partnered up, I think you said, with Spectrum. Munson has another huge plan that includes Manistee County.
So if I go for my annual physical and I do cholesterol checks, then I think there's a statistic that the Health Department eventually gets that says.
It may work, yeah, it may work into that eventually.
Not necessarily me, but I'm, I'm one person.
Yeah.
Do you compare against national statistics too for all of these items?
Some, depending upon the statistics, sometime we, we will include national comparison. Generally, taking this around, most of our individuals that we present to are interested in county to state or county to county, seeing what their neighbors are looking like. Back kind of to the, to the rest of the, the report, which is kind of this other, the other document that I handed out. Just a couple of highlights out of there. This is, this is actually the third year that I've, I've presented to you. And when I first started, I had mentioned that, you know, we were in, what we projected was gonna be a five-year period where we were gonna see a significant turnover in our public health workforce staff. And that is something that we are experiencing. That's, that's nationwide, it's statewide, and especially local. So, you know, we are losing public health employees, sanitarians and, and public health nurses that have thirty, forty years of public health experience. And while you can replace the individual, you can't necessarily replace that public health foundation. And so our challenge is to kind of get those people up to speed. In, in a couple of our counties, for the longest time, you know, we had some of the, some of the only public health nurses that had seen cases of measles and mumps, and not even the providers had experienced some of those. So you're kind of seeing that turnover now. And where we thought those things were gone, they're not. We've had confirmed cases of measles in Grand Rapids, we had a potential measles in Big Rapids, or a mumps in, in Big Rapids. So these things are still, are still around, and really one of the reasons why we continue to push the immunization discussion as often and as frequently as we, as we can. Aside from that, as you go through it, Egypt Division, the Environmental Health Division, some of their highlights looking at moving towards a GIS system finally. This will allow them to get away from using their pushpin maps to indicate things and kind of get them into the current century. One of the, just to kind of highlight some of the interesting things that we get involved in. Last fall, we were involved in a hepatitis A investigation, and it actually involves some strawberries that came from Egypt. These strawberries were contaminated with hepatitis A. With hepatitis A in a fourteen-day period, from the time you identify somebody to be able to treat them with a, with a vaccination, with an immunization. We got notice of, of, of this. From knowing when the distributor distributed the strawberries, we were already about a week left to complete this investigation. And so within our jurisdiction, we had identified five locations that potentially had gotten these strawberries. One of them was a nursing home in one of our counties that potentially could have served these strawberries to all of their residents. Initially, based on the information that we had received, we were under the impression that they had served these strawberries to the individuals, which would have required us to have to go in and provide prophylaxis treatment to them. Just prior to having to do that, we learned that they actually in fact did not serve these strawberries. But it was a good exercise and a good test for us to see how quickly, from within our ten counties, we could get enough vaccine to address that issue if, if needed.
So no one ate any of the strawberries, or some did?
We actually did have one. One county actually did serve, ended up serving the strawberries. It was more of a seasonal facility, well past that fourteen-day period, so there were no, if we, when we went back and took a, take a look at the statistics, there were no hepatitis A cases in that county, in those individuals from them. So, but just something a little, a little unique. The year before that, Ebola was in the picture, and we were involved in monitoring of Ebola patients. And actually, our first one was in this county Thanksgiving morning. I remember getting that call that we had to follow up on those individuals. So it is something new and, and unique that, that we are involved in. We do continue to offer free HIV testing in all ten of our, our counties. The funding that we received from this actually came about following, if anybody was familiar with, the HIV hepatitis C outbreak that occurred in Scott County, Indiana, as a result of the opiate epidemic. We had, there were eleven counties in Michigan that were identified as being at a similar risk for an event because of that. Within our jurisdiction, we had three of those counties. So we did give a little extra money to do some HIV testing, and we still continue to, to promote that HIV testing through our family planning.
Was it Neuland, I guess, and was it Neuland?
Mm-hmm, Neuland Sharon. So, you know, the opiate, the opiate epidemic, whatever you wanna call it, is something that, that's a statewide issue, and it touches all of our, all of our communities. So we, you know, we are looking to see where we can partner with our partners and other collaborative entities in our communities to see if there's a way that we can work to try to address that. But again, not an easy, not an easy problem. Really something that you have to get well upstream of to. Really something that you have to get well upstream of to, to be able to address it. So...
You seem to have, I, you know, looking through all of this, there's a lot of great work, of course, we know our, our health departments do, but, you know, I, I look at the, the task for Manistee County, these are huge, huge tasks, at least the three that are your primary issues. But, you know, the, the health issues are probably things that have been always, and seems to be always laying there in Manistee County. We are not a healthy community whatsoever. What, what conversations, you know, what county entities are, are formulating, you know, plans, or have, have we had a forum?
You know, there actually is a, there is a local coalition, Living Well Coalition, Living Well Coalition in, in Manistee is looking at trying to address some of the, the issues identified here through, you know, policy and environmental change type strategies. Those are the strategies that we know aren't going to have the biggest bang for, for your buck. So it's, it's trying to work with, just as an example, if you work with, you know, your fast food restaurants and, and, you know, you go in and have a happy meal, or a kid's meal, it's chicken nuggets, and it's french fries, and it's a pop, well, you know, can we make, can we make that so that the default items are actually healthy choices? Not totally taking them away, but the default is going to be a, a healthy choice. Instead of french fries, maybe it's half the slices. Instead of a soda pop, maybe it's, it's milk that, that they're going to get. So it's, it's ideas like that. It's working, the community gardens here in town, working on, on trying to create opportunities for people to increase access to healthy fruits and vegetables. It's, it's creating opportunities for physical activity. You know, those are, those are the pieces that unfortunately take some time to, to really demonstrate their, their impact. And, you know, these are things that didn't happen overnight, they're not things that are going to go away in, in a year's time. It's something that we have to continue to, to work on. You know, and, and part of it is also keeping, you know, keeping individuals and entities engaged in wanting to, to do that work, because it can get frustrating. Policy work is, is not fun to, is not a fun thing to do, but we do know, again, you know, evidence has shown us, those are the strategies that have the biggest bang for your buck.
That's, that's the piece I really, I, you know, Holly Joseph was part of the Living Well presentation last year at our summit. It was very well received. I don't know how many people walked out there going, geez, I better start looking at what a home meeting. I mean, really, truly, people were affected by that, and, and I know that they do a great job. I also just want to make sure that we have, you know, I look at this and I go, okay, Munson should be at the table, mental health should be at the table, I mean, you know, probably law enforcement needs to be at the table. So just that accountability, does the group from Living Well have enough ability to hold other organizations accountable for working on this? Is there anything we can do to support or to, to...
You know, I think in, in terms of looking at that, you know, example, you know, setting an example is kind of one of the best things that you can do. And, and so, you know, if there were to be a representative from the commission that wanted to sit at that table, I mean, there is, that's the example that you can set for other entities to, to show that there is, you know, concern and that there is a willingness to try, to try to work on that. Our plan is to look at hosting another summit once our Community Health Improvement Plan is done, and, and look at trying to kind of reinforce that and get that message out there. So, looking at trying to drum up some additional participation for that, for that event. The last thing I just did want to mention regarding our environmental health program, we are starting our own water testing lab. We just received, noticed that that lab was certified to do nitrates and bacterial sampling. So, instead of us not sending those water samples down to the Kent County lab or to the state lab, we actually will be able to do that testing in-house, and that lab will be in our Ludington office.
Do you do a lot of that, water testing? Do you do a lot of that?
Yep, with some of the tested, yep. Other questions?
I just want to make a statement. On the health promotion, we have substance abuse prevention, which, you know, our substance abuse money goes to the regional entity. But actually, District Health Number Ten actually coordinates for central wellness in this area, because about the grants that you guys were applying for, you found out this year, or he did it. But they do talk to each other on substance abuse. And they are, if we ever had a problem with our regional entity, they are a group we can fall back on because they're a core N A agency. So...
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Good presentation.
Maybe I'll see you Friday.
Okay. We'll see you.
Well, that's going to take us back to our Ways and Means. And we're at page twenty-seven, mid-year update on a childcare fund.
Cameron Clark, U.S. Services Director, prepared for a mid-year update on childcare fund expenses. Mr. Clark reported that it was mid-year, an average of one twenty-eight percent, a budget of less than expected. In addition, under twenty-two thousand less was budgeted for two thousand, two thousand seventeen budget. Uh, oops, prepared for, yeah. Mr. Clark stated the, that researchers clear that intervention for juveniles is early on or in front end, such as in-home care or diversion, the recidivism rate is much less compared to backend intervention, such as foster care, detention, and long-term placement, which does not have as much impact on the child, and is also much more expensive. The volunteer program, which has been put in place, is producing incredible results. However, the program is only twelve hours per week, and the program is matched out what it can do with those minimal hours. The two thousand eighteen budget request will be forthcoming for increased hours. He was putting his unknowns basically, I guess. And they have had a lot of successes. Another strategy that has been implemented is with the consent agent calendar. This program is an informal process where the court gets involved to help the child. And if probation is completed successfully, the juvenile has no formal court record. Manistee Courts use a negotiable points strategy. Juvenile is involved in plan, decides what they will be involved in and what they will complete for pre-assigned points, which gives the juvenile ownership of their planned probation. There are also non-negotiable points such as curfew, school attendance, and performance. Mr. Clark is probably ninety percent in reliance with this program. So, it's pretty impressive when Cameron presented all this. He will be paying, up for more money, but he's also having a great deal of success too.
Well, he's thirty-eight percent of his current line item, and it's mid-year, that's not bad.
I'd like to ask some questions on that too, if you don't mind. What I would like to see is, at that thirty-six percent that he's currently at...
Thirty-eight percent?
Thirty-six percent, if you guys have it here.
Am I looking?
His report?
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay. So, I would really like to see a breakout of per child, you know, how many kids is that? Is that five kids, fifteen kids, twenty kids? The same, same on the institutional care and foster care. If it's one child at, you know, fifty-three percent, okay, or fifty-three thousand, I, I'd like to look at these, kind of have a better idea of what we are spending per child. I do know that there's been some changes to the childcare fund, there's some new...
There's always changes.
And it's not going to be as super to, I mean, there, there are some restrictions that are coming up. So, I think that having that per cost breakout would be helpful to us in regards to future planning. Just a thought.
He's going to be making some requests to you, keep some of these programs going, that he feels are programs that no one else is doing, but they're really, the way I understand, this is a very simplistic way for me to explain it, because I don't have, I, I don't understand everything about what they do, is that they're trying to catch kids on the front end rather than on the back end. And, he's going to be coming to you at budget time to kind of continue that, and maybe even increase that effort funding wise. So, at that point, is a good time to maybe just get some of that information.
It may not hurt just to drop down a few of your points, and shoot him an email or see if he can have that when it's the budget, budget study session.
That would be a good idea.
I just put together a letter, and, you know, Mr. Cominsky, yeah, you're good to do it.
I'd also like to entertain with Cameron the idea that the state came out with this, and Cameron is a hundred percent right. You know, if you can intervene earlier, the detention and punishment process is, it doesn't work with the kids. So...
He is saying that it's working.
Punishment?
No.
Yeah, it doesn't work.
I'm in a position...
Right. There's also the program called Pathways to Potential, and that's a state program. And again, this is, if you don't catch the kid at the front end, especially in the school system, and they, they, they drop out, there is a, I think the statistics are ninety percent possibility that they will be in legal difficulty, whether juvenile or adult. So, it would be wonderful to find out if Cameron has any influence or ability, or if we could encourage the school systems to get involved in these pathways to potential, because they are a major player in all of this. And so I'd like, and I can ask Cameron, you know, what is the conversation to this school? I know that he's probably involved, he's very proactive, but, you know, I, I get concerned, are, are schools effective? Are they, are they stepping up like they should, or are they...
This is something good that we could bring up in joint court too.
Yes.
That's probably a two-way place. Do you kind of like the doors to Cameron or...
Programs. You know, a lot of the school systems, I worked with the Ludington School System, and, and they had opened the doors to a D H H, D H H S office sitting in their school system, in their public system, so that kids had access to coats and, and everything else, and all kinds of funding and, or resources, right there. They put in washers and dryers because of the number of homeless kids in Munson. You know, so, things like that are all really good things, and I think they could help Cameron in his quest to stop some of that stuff. It's just a thought.
Sounds like we got a topic for joint court.
Okay. I guess we're back on...
Equalization.
Yeah, there we go. Hopefully, today...
Well, why don't we just let Roger take it, take it from there.
Roger Elbers, Equalization Director, two thousand three, two thousand seventeen, Equalization Report, appendix age, and no one's...
All of this is not...
Yep.
Yes, everyone.
Did a number of...
That's, that's... I think I have till eleven-thirty, you have an appointment like last time.
Basically, when you open the front cover, the Board of Commissioners are required to meet in April to approve county equalization. And all of the townships and the city are at fifty percent. And so there's going to be no equalization factor applied to any of the units. And you might kind of wonder, how can you all be at a rate of fifty percent? Well, they're, they're technically not. They're between forty-nine and fifty. So anything between forty-nine and fifty is considered fifty percent. So, you would have to apply a factor whether you're over fifty or under forty-nine. But everyone's between that. Those numbers, so there's no factors. Flip over two pages, it lists my county equalization staff. And I just want to thank my staff, who did a wonderful job this year. And, you know, we're kind of a team. Each person, you know, one, one person might enter the deeds, the next does the appraisal, the next analyzes the information. And so we, we all work together to do the final project. If you flip over to page three, this is the Form L forty twenty-four, and it's part of the resolution that you're going to be asked to adopt, that approves this, this form and authorizes the chair and clerk to sign it. And it basically gives the amount of equalized value for each one of the units, both now between real and personal. On the first page, the second page has the breakdown between class, for example, ag, commercial, industrial, residential, and personal. And if you look on page number four and five, you're going to see they're exactly the same numbers. And that's because we're not applying any factor, so the assessed value, equalized values If you go over to page six, it breaks down the percent change from last year for each one of the units in the county. And you might notice that Arcadia Township, their taxable value went up eleven point nine-one percent. And I just want to kind of warn you that there was a clerical error in them entering one of their personal property statements, and they added six million dollars extra on consumer's power. And so, right now, as we stand, those are correct numbers, but that will be addressed at their July Board Review, and it's going to bring them back down to like a three or four percent increase.
Pleasant Township for their ten point...
That, that, the ten point, for assessed value for Pleasanton, that is the correct number. There, there's studies indicating that their residential classes were ten percent undervalued, and so they added, well, ten percent to the value of all the residential properties.
So that's going to be adjusted?
No, not Pleasanton, Arcadia. I guess the only one that had a minus in taxable value is Filer, and that's really basically because of their tax appeals in the P C A case, and their reduction in other personal property, the personal property that's phased out on the industrial properties. Page seven is exactly the same information, but it's in a graph form, and it's kind of easier to kind of see which townships are increasing the, in value the fastest. Page eight is going to be a pie chart, and it's going to show a breakdown between the different classes of property. And as everyone can see, seventy-nine percent of all the properties in the county are residential. And so we are truly a residential county, and that's where most of the value is.
Do you find that, like, if you looked at, what, what would be the, the standard or, you know, any kind of pie chart? Would you want a seventy-nine value, or would you want like a fifty?
Well, when I look at the city of Midland, more, a big chunk of their value is in industrial, because they have Dow Chemical, Dow Corning. So, it really depends on, you know, we're, we're really in a rural area here, we're residential, we don't have a lot of...
Probably makes for a much more stable tax base, having more residential.
It makes for a more stable one, but it doesn't, there's not probably the jobs, because there's not the industrial base here. Although we do have, you know, three or four, you know, pretty large-sized companies. Page nine shows the equalized value for the county starting in two thousand and five through the present. And you can see that it was going up quite rapidly until about two thousand and eight, and that's where we reached a high of one point six million. And then it was dropping steadily through the recession. And we really didn't start a little uptick until two thousand and fifteen. So, our equalized value was going up, went down, and now it is just starting to go back up again. But we still have, you know, we're still...
Under two thousand and eight, yeah, way under two thousand and eight.
Yes.
It just looks like a more steady and appropriate rise as we're doing it.
It's, it's starting to, like you say, it leveled off, and now values are going back up. Page ten is the resolution that you're going to be adopting. And included in that resolution is authorizing the board to sign, or the board chairman and the clerk to sign the L forty thirty-seven report. And those were in the board packet. And that's basically for each one of the townships and the city, there's a report that we have signed to tell them we're not adding or deducting any value from their roles. And that has to be approved also with this resolution. Page eleven is the, a chart that shows the assessed, equalized, and taxable of each one of the units. And again, you can see the assessed and equalized are exactly the same, and the taxable is, in some units, it's considerably less than the assessed, in some units, it's getting pretty close together, because values have not gone up much faster than the rate of And page twelve, this is going to show the taxable value for the county. We reached a high in two thousand and five of a one point one million dollars. And it's really been very steady ever since then. You know, we've had a little bit of a reduction and a little bit of a gain. On two thousand sixteen, we had another reduction and that's when the E M P P, the manufacturing personal property went off the roll. And so we kind of expected that, but it really has been pretty, pretty stable. And that's one of the things, assessed value going up and down, but your taxable value is, is much more stable and it allows for better, better budgeting for, for town. Um, page thirteen shows a graph of the assessed value compared to the taxable. And as you can see in areas like the Arcadia Township, there's a big gap because a lot of the late front properties in nineteen ninety-four were at a low level and they went very high and their taxable value's just been creeping up. And so in other units like the city, there's not a big difference between the assessed and taxable on most of the properties. It's the values have not gone up much faster than the rate of inflation. Page fourteen shows a graph of the equalized and taxable value. And again, as it started out in two thousand and four, they were the same number and they've been gradually getting wider, but then as our assessed value's been going down, the taxable value's been remaining stable, so they're getting closer together again. Page fifteen shows the same information in a graph form. Uh, page sixteen, we have the ad form role, which are the normal properties in the county. And then we also have some special X properties, which include industrial facilities, Renaissance zones, the D and R properties. And this page gives you a kind of a breakdown of the value of those. And for example, I F T properties are taxed at fifty percent of the normal rate. Renaissance zones only pay debt. And the D and R properties, they pay a payment in lieu of tax, which the state pays us, uh, and Russ has information on there, but he's, he's not here.
What, what is that? I mean, what's the percentage? It's not a full.
Um, no, no, they pay, they pay very little.
Exactly.
But D and R property?
Yes. But that's, but that, when, because when we're at meetings, we always hear about pilt.
Yes.
And one of the topics currently going on in Lansing is in regard to, should the state be purchasing more property or not? And well, it ties it to pilt. Well, the, the state pays a fraction of pilt.
Well, what happened is Senator, I don't know all the details, but Senator Brewer got some legislation passed, he brought it up last night.
I know.
That, that gave us a more steady stream of, of pilt. The state wasn't even paying, I mean, they've just, at a whim would say, well, we, we don't have the money to pay it this year, you know? And, and they, they have to pay it now, but it is a fraction of what you would pay on private property.
Well, I guess I'm bringing up the point, when it comes to legislatively, you know, when we keep, you know, and I could argue and debate the point in regard to property taxes all over the place, but when we keep trying to defer and if we keep saying we want to have more public ground and then we have more, it's put away in conservation set asides and on and on and on we go, it just puts more and more of the tax burden on everybody else's back.
Federal pilt is the same way, it's at the whim of the, of the, of Congress almost every year and we get, we get a good chunk of money, but, and it's always, but right now it's probably up in the air again, we could lose a hundred thousand dollars, you know, if Congress doesn't approve it. And you got to realize that not every state in our nation cares about pilt. It's only the western states.
It's the rural ones.
It's Wyoming and Michigan and some of those places that have a lot of federal land that, that care and then we have to convince the others, you know, congressmen to, or women to, 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 to approve it.
That is four dollars a day.
It, it's very, it's very little, so we, we have like three million dollars in taxable value, you would typically get, you know, if you're at a fifty mil, you would, you would be like fifteen thousand dollars. And it's, it's less than that, so. Um, page seventeen, uh, commercial forests, those are also exempt and they'd be a dollar twenty-five per acre. Um, page eighteen kind of lists our, um, number of parcels in each property class, broken down by each one of the units, the school districts, the villages. Page nineteen is our parcel count for the county. And currently we have about twenty-six thousand one hundred and eighty-seven parcels in the county. And it's actually a drop of one parcel from last year. And some of the townships had increases, some decreases. The big, the big change, we had, we had quite a few splits, so we had a lot of real properties that were added and we had a lot of personal property accounts that were closed um, this year, so, so we lost quite a few personal property accounts.
And we use that page to bill all the townships, the per parcel charge, to, to do all their, all of our tax, all their tax billing on their behalf and make this in the tax roll. We charge them a fee per parcel.
Page twenty, we saw the number of deeds processed. And if you kind of look at the bottom line in the late nineties and early two thousands, our office was processing around thirty-five hundred dollars, thirty-five hundred deeds a year. Then when the recession kind of hit, uh, we were down to under twenty-five hundred deeds. And last year, last couple of years, we picked back up to over three thousand and this year we're, we're at thirty-five thousand, three hundred, three thousand five hundred thirty-three. So the workload in my office has increased as far as the number of deeds being processed. And, you know, those, it's not just processing the deed because that happens, they get recorded at the Register of Deeds Office, but then they come to my office and we change the name, uh, we change the address, we analyze the sale, see if it's a good sale, doesn't need to be uncapped, was a transfer between related parties that didn't need to be uncapped. So there's, there's a lot of work for every time a deed gets recorded for us to process and analyze that sale. Page twenty-one, this kind of gives a, uh, history of the percent change between years. And again, as you can see in the late nineties, early two thousands, the values were, were jumping, you know, ten percent a year. Um, when we hit, uh, two thousand and eight at the start of the recession, um, they slowed down and then the act values actually went down, two thousand nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, leveled off in fourteen, and now we are starting to come back up. And again, sixteen is kind of an anomaly because had we not had the reduction in the personal property, um, that would have showed an increase for that year.
And this is, this is the number we use for budgeting. And, um, Jeff, you made, made a comment on the way home last night, you know, we're going to go up one point seven seven percent, that's pretty good. It is pretty good, but that is not what I will be using for next year. That is what we are going to get this year. We're already halfway through, more than halfway through our fiscal year, we have not received one dime of, of tax revenue. That's why a fund balance is important, because if we didn't have a fund balance, we would be borrowing money in anticipation of our taxes and paying interest on that. And it's also, it shows you how difficult it is to budget now. We had to, I'm going to be starting next year's budget, we already sent out the request forms and Russ and Roger are going to be giving me some estimates for tax, for tax revenue. But we won't know what that tax revenue is until next year.
Right, but we projected, what was the number we projected?
We projected, I think.
Budget was put together.
One, one percent and we're, we're.
Four seven seven, which is a big help.
Well, it's not going to be one point seven seven.
Not going to be one seven seven, those are the numbers now. We know there's going to be a six million dollar reduction from Arcadia at Board Review and that would take it to a one point two seven. And then there's going to be other veterans exemptions and other changes. And so I, I think when we get all through the board reviews, the one percent is probably going to be right, right on the nose this year.
Now Roger is telling me, the good news is that the projection for next year is going to be somewhere around three percent, which is, uh, I can't even remember, well, it's been, it's been since two thousand nine that we even came close, well, we had three and a half percent. You can really see by looking at this page why we've had, the budget issues we've had. And, and really in comparison to other counties, we haven't lost as much as like in Oakland County, we're seeing what, negative ten, negative fifteen percent. We've stayed fairly stable, but we went one, two, three, four, about four years, three years of negative tax growth. That means we're living on the same budget, same taxable income.
For nine, ten years.
And it doesn't matter, you know, you have wage increases, you have fringe benefit increases, you have costs, uh, costs of doing business, the increases there, plus we're losing other state and federal revenues, so it's been very difficult and we've been lucky not to have to lay anybody off, but we've, we've made it and everyone contributed to that, including the employees who have not seen the raises they used to see. You can see, it was easy to budget back in two thousand two and two thousand one when we were increasing our taxable value by eight to half percent. I mean, we had more money than we knew what to do with at that point. So that's where some of those fund balances were built up and it was a good thing that that happened because otherwise we'd have really been hurt.
And the last page are our top ten tax fears.
Who's number four? What's M E T C?
It's an electronic, electric transmission lines. So it's basically like the consumer's power, but it's just power lines.
What's, who's American materials?
That is Reith Riley, Dash fault.
Do the M E Ts be I T C?
I suppose I couldn't answer that. And again, consumers is at the top of the list. We know they're going to lose about six million dollars, they're still going to be at the top of the list. You know, a few years ago, PCA was, was at the very top, um, but now most of their personal property is exempt and so they, they dropped considerably. Are there any questions?
On page sixteen, what was the S D, is S D standing?
The school district.
School district. I can't take this off.
Yeah, so you would look there and you would see like in Springdale Township, we have nineteen properties in the ten zero fifteen, which is Vency Camp, Vency School District. And then we had six properties in.
Yes, Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yeah.
Commissioner does?
Yes. Okay, with that, Mr. Bergstrom, then order would be entertained for the approval of the Ways and Means Committee meeting, committee meeting minutes of Wednesday, April nineteenth, twenty seventeen.
I'll make that one, sure.
Motion in support, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries. All right, thank you very much. Roger, that was a good report and I, I enjoy your graphs, easy to read.
Yeah.
Thank you.
More color, more ground.
Good. Okay, we're on to the green team.
Green team.
Green team met on, uh, March third, members present, myself, Commissioner Botzer, and Aaron was not available at the time. It also had some, uh, other people present, Sarah Archer being the primary. Uh, there were no board actions. Sarah did give an update on the Public Act six to nine and how that was going and, and talked a little bit about where we're going with the grant monies that, uh, were given to investigate the possibility of a regional recycling program. And that was about it.
Does anybody have any questions from the minutes?
I might add that the household hazardous waste thing is, is still.
On hold.
And, uh, uh, looks like it'll be, everything except latex paint. Did you say that you didn't latex paint this time?
I believe that's correct.
Yeah.
Um, one thing I did want to add about the Household Hazardous Waste Committee, since I started on that committee, um, they are a little bit concerned that they might be a little bit short of funding and so they're exploring the option of approaching some of the local businesses, um, and asking for some funding for that. Um, the other local units of government throughout the counties that participate in that, um, some contribute more than others, but I can't say that Manistee County, um, participates very well and, um, the units in Manistee County, I believe all except for East Lake Village have paid for the year. So we're doing very well in that regard. And, uh, and we get very good participation with that.
How much do we put in for, do you know roughly?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Seven thousand.
Thank you.
Seven thousand dollars.
Is there been a deficit on, and do they review the stuff and stuff, or is there enough cash to pay for it?
There has been, but apparently they generally go into the collection event each year with a larger balance than what they're going in, what they expect to go into it with this year, although as the different communities and townships are paying, it looks like they're going to be in better shape than anticipated.
It's important, you know, to, to rid of that stuff.
And they're disposing of it properly, which I think is really important too.
And I would say, you know, you got to give them a way to dispose it, otherwise it ends up on, on the steep ground. See all that.
All right, with that, a motion to be in order to accept the minutes as presented from the Thursday, March twenty-third, uh, green team.
Make the motion.
Motion, support for that.
Sorry.
Second, all right, we have motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Onto the regional summit.
Regional summit is, uh, well down the road as far as organization. Uh, in your packet, you'll see there's an agenda that's been published. This is a draft, it's subject to change based on the availability of, of participants, uh, but this should be the way it works out. Ben's going to be in trying township, but they're, silly. That's about it.
All right, so motion to be in order for the approval of the regional summit committee minutes. Motion, support for that? We have the support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Tom, you're up.
And nothing. Except, don't forget. Don't forget to sign your reports before you.
Uh, Tom, I just want to thank you, your staff are doing a super job putting these agendas together. It just makes it so easy to, to go up and get rid of the whole package.
Oh.
It's just, you know, it makes it really easy.
Well, I, I really like the fact that we have, you know, some, some counties, I've talked to other counties that, you know, their committee meetings are kind of held the day of the board meeting and all this stuff. I think our system here, where you actually have written reports, action items, really is a, is a good way to go. I think we'd be running, um, it would seem much more disorganized, I think, if we didn't have those committee reports. And, and the clerk's office does all the committee reports, just so, you know, we don't do those, but, but the, uh, you know, the board packet and everything, we've kind of, I think, come up with a pretty good system. And we work very well with the clerk's office, they get upset with us sometimes because we keep bugging them for the committee reports and sometimes they don't. Speaking of agendas, we do have a issue here. You go down to, uh, Barley Improvement Board, with Mr. Ken Hillier.
Oh, I need to change.
He'll be now, Pauline.
I will change.
You know you're a member.
I attended twice.
Yeah, I took off the, uh, the West Shore Hospital ad hoc committee report and I don't know how I, yeah, I didn't see Ken Hillier.
But at any rate, anything to report, Ken?
Ken wasn't there.
He should have been, he should have been.
Yeah, I know, I mean, he's the drain commissioner now and they missed him because he has bills, so, but, um, they resolved that after a short time. They, um, they're doing well, their, their assessment is going to remain the same as it has been the last couple of years, which is seventy dollars per unit. And, um, they, they have a good handle on the control of their money, no problem, so.
And all invasive, I shouldn't say, the three invasives and actually add. And all of basis, I should say the three invasives and actually added to that last year, the D R D, or the D E Q. All right, um, as far as the Power Lake Improvement Board, we did have one meeting, uh, nothing of note, we paid our second quarter bill. We will have possibly an important member at our next meeting, which is, I'm guessing, June. Our water's too cold to do any treating, so. Let me see, anything, Road Commission. I wasn't at the last meeting because I had a funeral to attend, but, um, nothing else, Airport, Brooke?
Uh, yes, I'm happy to announce that the fifty thousand dollars of monies that has been gone for four years, or been trying to be grabbed, has finally come through and if you remember various concern, when he met with us last month, that, uh, if that money didn't come, our, our budget would be in jeopardy, so that's taken care of.
We don't have the money in hand yet.
No, but it's been approved. But it's been approved.
What grade is that?
It's the, uh, marketing grant from four years ago. Money's already been spent, but that revenue is still reflected as being in our budget, so that's all taken care of. Uh, the Hanger Committee, uh, this board has agreed to, uh, fund the Hanger expansion, but there's, there's some things in the works relative to aircraft and, uh, sizes and possibility of different carriers, et cetera. So that project is on hold right now. As soon as we get an update, I'll, I'll bring it to you. Hopefully you'll still be willing to let's have a hundred thousand dollars, but, uh.
Uh, was it, was it, were we?
No, it was a payback.
Yeah.
It was a payback to you.
We, we may have to work on, and this is really, this is more of an internal thing, but we may have to work on how we word things because the money that we gave to the library in a loan, where we gave part of it, the library auditors had all kinds of issues with that. And said we were violating Michigan law and it was really because of the way we worded it, that we called it a loan. And it really, I can't remember all the details of this, but we kind of got to be careful and probably the same thing with the airport. So we got to be a little careful in the future how we word certain things.
So we're loaning.
It's a matter of language, really.
We did finish up our strategic plan.
Uh, that's, that's been done, will be, uh, in fact, we approved it last meeting. And that's.
I think the big thing right now for us at the airport, since I'm on that board, E A S, Essential Air Service, uh, it's on the chopping, chopping block in D C. I don't think, you know, I, I can understand their concern over that expenditure, I mean, but the thing of it is, is our deployments are not. Point being is our airport wouldn't be one of those, I think people would be, if they were aware of the deployments we have. I mean, they're more concerned about that one or none airport that just doesn't get the traffic. But, uh, I'll tell you what, if we were to lose that, it's a monster in the room for the airport, it's going to have a huge impact. That does go that way.
We will become a general aviation airport, which means we'll just have, we won't have any commercial.
Well, there's a meeting with Senator Peters.
I thought, wasn't it last week, Wednesday?
Hmm, I believe so, yes.
I don't know what the outcome of that was, but he's, he's actually on the committee to charge Essential Air Service, so. U S Senator.
While I have the floor, I'll talk about dialeride, we'll talk about bathrooms, we'll be finished here very shortly. They've been running it out the back door.
I've been waiting.
You've been waiting. But I actually had an opportunity to walk into the new facility while the painters were painting and it's a tremendous improvement over what we had. We got away from the salmon colored tile and the green fixtures, that's all gone now. And, uh, we're going to have two nice facilities, we'll maybe change it. That's, that's a good question.
Um, I, speaking of dialeride, I had a question about that. There was a citizen at Senator Brewer's Coffee Hour on Friday who brought up an issue about the possibility of a universal transportation card. And thought that that might be something to bring up to the dialeride board. Um, so a universal transportation card that could be used between different county transportation entities, so that individuals would be able to trans, uh, transfer from one, um, county dialeride bus to another in another county. So for instance, from Manistee to Vensi.
I brought up the, uh, the issue of cards before and I believe they don't have a card in, in our dialeride where you purchase a card and it's good for a month or whatever. So there's, there'd be a lot of things that have to be worked out on that.
That would be much easier to work on, than it would be self.
Right. If you get all the way up to Paris City.
So anyway, it was something that a citizen had brought up, but I just wanted to pass along.
I wasn't able to attend the, uh, nine one one, maybe this time because I was double booked with Ways and Means and nine one one. I can report that the M D T project is done. There was a question about supplying M D T to, uh, the city's ambulance. Dial, or nine one one did provide an M D T for that ambulance because of the issue where, with the mutual aid that we have in the county, that ambulance could be called out to Arcadia or any place like that. And the M D T in that particular ambulance, first and final, uh, was important. They'd be able to get where they're going without having to worry about, where is this place? And with the M D T, that's the, the mobile data terminal, gives them a map and all that stuff to be able to perform their mutual aid function more efficiently.
Karen, anything?
No, we heard about the backup facility, um, there's not much else.
Mike?
I think I've brought up everything I can.
Patrick?
Just one thing, Networks Northwest got hacked. And you're almost going to be held to ransom, but it didn't quite get through the whole system. Because, you know, that would take down all the Michigan Works and everything.
It happens to us.
Elaine Wood found it on her laptop. She hurried up and got I T on it and they shut down all the ones right in Networks Northwest. They solved the problem in about a day and a half.
We had the same, we had the same thing happen to us here. And it didn't get, it was caught quickly and before any major damage. We ended up spending, you recall, seven thousand dollars to, to, to upgrade our, our protections.
Then they also talked about the workforce program down, uh, the adult education. And they gave three examples of three people that went back, one to get his diploma because his employer found out that he hadn't really graduated, he put down he graduated, there was no record, so he had to go get his diploma. And there's two Oriole girls that had a four point oh average graduate from Traverse City. They had to go for the adult education because they couldn't speak English. So they had a big discussion about this and after they got all done, I said to the women, I says, what, there was actually another gentleman that was in there too. I said, what did all three of those people have in common? Because they were talking about their success. He said, everyone was forced, motivated to do something. The girls, because they couldn't get a job, they knew everything, but they couldn't get a job, they couldn't talk English. And the gentleman, he was going to be let go because he didn't have diploma. She says, I never thought about that, I said, yeah, so your statistics are skewed just a little bit there. Because that gentleman would have never went back and those girls, if they could have got a job, they would have never used the program either.
I was wondering how you can have a four point average in your school, how they did.
I was wondering about that tip.
Sign language.
Yeah, well, you can't knock the language in, in school, because there's students who only speak Spanish.
There's translated things on the internet, though, you can put in Japanese and it'll come up English.
It was kind of interesting when we got through talking, you know.
East Lake language is different anyway.
Yeah. Jennifer translates that all the time with foreign customers and it's not word for word by any stretch.
No.
Mr. Bergstrom?
I have nothing to add.
Ken or Pauline?
Ken.
All right, I've, nothing to add, though. I guess with that, we're going to close it at twelve oh nine, meeting adjourned. Oh, I always forget that. And, anything? Public comment? No? adjourned.
Oh, yeah?
What?
The street, the street, when they talk about the street.
That's okay.
You coming to do it?
Manistee City Council, optimal budget work session for Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, seven P M is now called for order. Uh, work session items, the only thing we have on a work session is the public workshop. At this time, public comments on work session related items will be received, please limit to five minutes, so that any going. In attendance, yes, sir. Please step forward, state your name and address.
My name is Howard Turk, excuse my voice, I just had a new plate put in. But anyhow, I live at one fifty-two Quincy Street. I've been there since I was twenty years old and I'm seventy-five now, so I've been there for fifty-five years. And I've been after all the way back from Chester Goszewski to get that street straightened out. Nobody, every city manager, I even came up and seen Thad last year, talked to him, same thing. All the sand that came out of North Side, millions, none of it was spent there. Now, all the gas and not oil, but gas, revenue, there is being used on everything but the street. So every one of yous must have went down Quincy Street. It's only one street long, but it's got holes in it. There's no other street like it, it's bad. And after fifty-five years, don't you think one of the city council people would come forward and say, hey, let's do it, he's waited long enough. Few years ago, excuse me. About ten years ago, Cynthia Fuller, Fuller was my councilman and mayor. She came over there, looked at it, there was a section twenty foot wide by about fifty foot long. There was nothing, nothing to repair, it was just dirt. She got ahold of Mitch, told him, you will do it. From that time on, me and Mitch didn't get along. One day, I was here in the office, meeting with somebody else, Denise, and he walked in and I turned up to him and I says, oh, we're going to get Quincy Street now? He grabbed me by the throat and choked me. I turned and looked at Denise and surprise. This can't go on, I don't know if that's the reason why he got picked out of here or what, but after fifty-five years, don't you think North Side, Quincy Street needs to be repaired? Before, when Giger was on, it was only eighty-five thousand. Now it's up to about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty thousand. Please, each one of yous think for yourselves. And we got to get that done before I, done. Thank you very much.
Do we have anyone else that wishes to make public comment? We begin with the work session. I think when we left off last time, Council Member Beaton wanted to have a discussion on trees.
Does anyone want to head first?
That's for.
Let's do it. I'm looking at the street projects and capital improvement plan.
Do you have base?
I'm getting to it. Starts on page eighteen. Okay, the breakdown of where we're spending the three eighty-three, seven hundreds. The breakdown of where it's.
On page twenty.
Pardon me?
Page twenty, I got it on the screen.
Oh, okay. Okay, it looks like we're doing some work on Sixth Avenue, Short, Fifth Avenue, Jefferson and Washington. Is that correct? Is Jeffy there?
The lists is up on the screen are the ones that are proposed.
Right, right, well, I'm, I'm just asking about the North Side. At this point. So that would just be Sixth Avenue, Short, Jonesburgs, Washington and Fifth Avenue and Jefferson. And we're doing a melon fill, it says heavy rehab melon fill, right?
Correct.
Okay. That's for this year in this budget, but it won't be done this spring, it'll be done, say, next spring?
Potentially, it could be done yet this fall or next spring, depending on how fast we can get the corrings done and the engineering can be completed. And if we can get favorable bids yet this fall, it could be done yet in two thousand seventeen.
Could maybe spring, but I think cash flow, you're not that.
And we have, yeah, match cash flow also.
Then nothing is really scheduled for the North Side in twenty nineteen. And then in twenty twenty, we've got Jackson, Van Buren, Cleveland, a little bit more Washington, Jackson. And that's reconstruction with storm, right?
Correct.
Isn't that kind of the category that Quincy falls into?
It is. And this, those two projects are, there's actually three streets that are there that would be reconstructed. But that's the first year that we'd have available to put money into utilities. And below Jackson and Van Buren, we've got undersized mains, um, it's one of the lowest pressures of water. And from the fire department's perspective, it's also has the highest, um, fire loading, it's got the highest, highest fire loading because of the, um, lumberyard. We've also had numerous freeze ups and run waters in that area, so, um, that was selected as a priority to match up, work on local streets, but also improvements on the infrastructure below.
But that would be, that would be similar to what needs to be done in Quincy, right?
Same type of category, yes.
Okay, then in twenty twenty-one, we've got four Fifth Avenue, same areas.
That's not what you're showing up on the screen.
Twenty twenty-one, I'm looking at twenty twenty-one.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, that's also, well, that's heavy rehab, melon fill. Um, and then by twenty twenty-two, we've got local reconstruct with storm sore, project to be determined. And you've got seven hundred and fifty feet.